Please rise.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting in Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mark Harrison will lead us in prayer this evening, and please remain standing for the pledge to be led by our court clerk.
Pray with me. Our Father in heaven, it's one more time that we bow our unworthy head and call upon your name. We thank you, Lord, for this county. We thank you, Lord, for this state, and we thank you, Lord, for this nation, that we've been privileged to be born and live in our entire life, Father. We could have been born anywhere else in the world, but you chose to send us to good parents who took us to church, raised us, taught us right from wrong. Most importantly, Lord, they taught us about you and your son. We pray for each commissioner here tonight, each elected official, each school board member. Lord, we pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance as we try to make decisions that are in the best interest of this county. Forgive us for our sins, and thank you, Lord, for salvation. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, Paul Rowe.
It is wish to record your presence.
We have twenty-two commissioners present tonight. The majority will remain, a majority vote will remain thirteen, and two-thirds vote, of course, will remain at sixteen. I will say that I received a call today from Commissioner Moss, and he is spending nights now with his mother at the hospital. And then I found out this evening that Commissioner Pomeroy is out of town, so we do have the twenty-two commissioners present tonight to conduct business. Do I have a motion to, well, before we approve the agenda, I'm going to make this note. E., under Report of the Chair, we will have meeting, a meeting time discussion for October with Columbus Day taking some of the time that we have for committees. And I believe that's going to do it. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Harris and second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. Approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner. All right, Mansfield and Teichner. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. Approval of the minutes for August the 21st meeting. So moved by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Klein. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose light sign.
I'll abstain.
Aye, Commissioner Becker abstain. At this time, we'll have recognition of the public. If the Sheriff will give that to us.
Depending on how many there are, if we want to do the certificates first or not?
We have five, and they look, I don't think, I think we'll just go ahead. Judge Blanton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Ron Blanton. I live at 103 William Shire Drive in Hendersonville, and I'm here tonight, and I've spoken to Commissioner Schoeff about this, about a resolution that came through the Budget Committee, may have came through this body regarding the grants, giving a two-week, a two-month notice prior to a department applying for a grant. That simply will not work from a recovery court standpoint, which is where most, ninety-nine percent of our funding comes from grants. We get those grants a lot of times, first of June, and they have to be submitted by June 15th for dispersment on July the 1st, and in order to give two months' notice is just not practical, and it would shut that program down, which is a vital, vital part of our, our county and to criminal justice. As I spoke with Mr. Harrison, Commissioner Harrison this morning about recovery court, we have one of the top recovery courts in the nation where our recidivism rate is 5.7% in general sessions, and in criminal court, I think it's 14%, where your national average is 76% of people who come back into the criminal justice system. And by, this resolution is just not feasible in the recovery court world, and so I would ask you to reconsider that resolution to one that's more applicable, that's workable. I understand the pressures that each one of you all go through when you get a stack of papers seven days before you have to vote on it, and it's, you know, 400 pages. That's typically not what happens in a recovery court, but to put down an entire order, a resolution, that every grant has to follow that procedure is just not practical, and I would ask that you not approve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I will say that I was the one responsible for that resolution because of the problems we had with things being thrown at us at the last minute from grants. However, we will maybe consider some resolution to that through the, the meeting tonight or later. Lauren, Laura Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand you're not getting my name right. You're used to my better speaking other half coming up here. I decided to speak tonight, which I don't often do, because I was kind of fired up after, and saddened also, by some things that were said at the Budget Committee meeting last Monday. One of the things was that you don't back the blue, and because you are our elected representatives, by extension, that means that the citizens of Sumner County don't back the blue. Nothing could be further from the truth. Well, I could talk for a long while, because this has weighed heavily on me for a week. I thought a few pictures would be worth a lot more than a whole bunch of my words. This is from the budget document of this year, and I know you can't see it here, but I've got stands back there. You can look at it later. This chart shows county general's budget for this year and the expenditures that were made, and public safety was the number-one increase in, in county general, both in terms of dollars and percentage. Something that this commission was also faced with was converting raises that were given to the Sheriff's Department in one-time ARPA money. And I don't know about you, but I, I mean, you probably want and deserve your raises to be recurring, not out of one-time money. So they did a good job in shoring that up. But what we heard at last week's meeting was basically a whole new request for SROs that we'd never heard before, two in the high schools, and that, you know, that may be what the standard is, but that's a whole new request. And that was made on a sheet that looks like this, that frankly, I can't make out as a citizen. I have no idea what this means. It doesn't really, if it didn't say SRO and patrol on here, I wouldn't even know what department this came from and what case is being made. And I'm not sure how the Budget Committee was even able to take it up or why it didn't go through Health and Emergency Services first. We also don't know what those new positions are really going to cost. We don't have a total cost on that yet, and we have no guarantees of what the state dollars are going to be. I also thought that it was worth mentioning how we got to where we are with these funds. Over the last eight years, we've had property tax increases before totaling 41%, one in 2014 for 24%, another one in 2019 for another 17%. And you, your wallets probably felt it, but what we were told in 2014 is that part of that tax increase was going to pay for an SRO in every school. In 2019, we were told the same thing, school resource officer in each existing school. We've paid millions of dollars for SROs and have no answer as to where they all are. And because Robertson County was mentioned last week as apparently a standard that we need to live by, this is the first property tax they've had in eight years, and it was only 9%. So one of the things that really would have helped all of this is back in 2011, three county commissions ago, there was a resolution to be debt-free by this year, debt-free by 2023. But the two commissions after that didn't follow that, even though that would have freed up $20 million of money that we could have spent on all these other things that county general has been shorted all these years. Instead, we paid for a bunch of edifices that we get to bow to out on the court over here. Not saying we didn't need a new court. I mean, we can argue about all these things all day long, but I don't think we needed that, and we don't even know all the costs of that. We're going to need more officers to transport people from the jail over to the new courthouse. We're going to need vehicles to transport people where right now it's attached, and we don't even know what that stuff is going to cost yet. The whole budget for the Sheriff's Department's $33 million. Imagine what that $20 million could have done. To wrap up, we all wish all county employees could be paid more. We wish everybody could be paid more. This economy is hitting everybody, and by approaching the representatives by saying they don't care about the blue, it's an easy way out to not walk up to your elderly neighbor who's struggling paying their medical bills and their taxes and say to them, "I want a raise. Fork it over." I hope we can find a good balance to this because we've got enough divisiveness, but I would do want you to know we do all back the blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlena Allmiller.
Hi, I'm Charlena Allmiller at 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. I have several resolutions that I'd like to speak about, and I'll go over my shortest discussions first. With respect to the 2309-11 for the procedures for employee complaints, I'm concerned that it states that elected officials would go before the county commission's ethics committee and that it can be used for political gain inappropriately. As for the establishing procedures for review of grants, I echo what Judge Blanton said, that it, it could allow for a lot of people to lose out on money, and this is money, when, if economic times are that hard, it would be nice to be able to get that money. As for Resolution 230916 of encouraging the Resource Authority to hold meetings at the Administration Building, I've been to several board meetings of, of for-profit companies, and I just don't know of any place where, that they have a board meeting that's not held at the location that's being supervised, and these board members are getting $400 paid out of the Resource Authority budget to be on that board, so I would hope that they could make it to that building for those meetings. And as for the roof or the solar lease agreement, as long as it doesn't hold up the actual roof repair that's been approved for over a year, I have no problem with looking into it. As for the, the resolution to protect the children on 230914, I would like to say, I was thinking about talking, I'd taken my oldest to the Nashville Children Theater last year to see Anne Frank, but I wasn't sure if it was age-appropriate for a third grader. I started looking into books that could be read to see if they would play, if the play would be age-appropriate. When I was looking, my oldest came home with one of the books I'd been considering. I asked a teacher if she thought my oldest was ready, and the teacher thought it would be okay. My oldest started reading on a Saturday morning. Then I heard running down the steps, and my oldest is standing there with tears, looking at me with questions. My oldest had gotten through the first chapter. I said, "The girl doesn't die, and it gets better." Through weepy eyes, my oldest told me how mean the mom was in the book, and then my oldest said, "I'm sorry, I thought you were mean." You see, we had been getting in arguments about homework for several weeks, and my oldest tended to think that I was the meanest mom in the world by that point. That was the most eye-opening experience I've had as a parent in the past year. People always say that books give people empathy, but I was never an avid reader. Most of the empathy I got, I learned, I earned the hard way, through life experiences. I had never dreamed that this book would help my oldest distinguish normal disagreements with parents from the abuse this child in, in the book endured. This one book made our bond stronger. I was shocked, and it was right then and there that I was a believer that we can all learn something from books, even the ones that are hard to read. According to the logic that will be used tonight to try to disparage our schools yet again, and in an attempt to gain political points during a campaign year, my oldest will learn to be an abuser by reading this book. The absolute opposite is true. My oldest learned what abuse really is in this book, something that I hope my children never learn at home, whether as kids or as adults. I wholeheartedly believe my oldest will be a better parent when the time comes because of this book. The three books that are currently being attacked by some commissioners, one was removed, and it had only been checked out once in the entire time it was on the shelves. To continue to raise it as an issue seems to be more about ego and punishment and political points than it does seem to be about protecting children. The book, Perks of Being a Wallflower, has been considered by the school board and has been voted to stay on the shelves. I have read this book. For me, it wasn't a feel-good book, but rather a book for teens to learn about everyday issues in high school through reading about them first, instead of experiencing them firsthand. The pages that are most attacked describe a rape by a popular boy with his popular girlfriend. It is written in a very clinical way to remove all emotion and subjectivity, and then it is referenced as rape twice, so the reader understands that expressing a lack of consent is rape, even if the victim doesn't scream. There is no enticement to encourage it. There is no actual, there's actually a warning to teens that being alone with your significant other in a room at a party with your friends will not make you safe from any evil doings. There are actually many warnings in this book that can help teens navigate high school through more tools to protect themselves than if they haven't, if they don't have access to this book. I have not read The Bluest Eyes yet, and I will reserve my opinion for that after I've had a chance to read it, but it also has not been before the school board yet, and so this is a premature discussion if that book is up tonight. The public should know that thebooklooks.org, that are excerpts in this agenda, was started by the Moms for Liberty Group. It takes excerpts from books to feed to people nationwide to try to challenge books. I would encourage you to, instead of her looking at elected officials and how they should do their jobs, please do yours and look at the compensation that our county employees have because they do need more. Thank you.
Kay Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Kay Brooks. I live at 123 Trousdale in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I am more angry than I have ever been in my entire life over a political issue. The Board of Education and its director have failed in its in loco parentis privilege, and so we must come to you for backup support. These, these outrageous efforts to enable the grooming of our precious children by shunting off responsibility to professional librarians overseen by a Marxist American Library Association or via some faux First Amendment right that gives publishers and authors more free speech than parents and taxpayers is a galling dereliction of duty. And why am I telling you this? Because the Board of Education won't allow discussion of this topic if it's not on the agenda. And, well, surprise, surprise, it's never on the agenda. Where's the free speech argument against the shutting down of citizens' concerns at the Board of Education about this? Just because children can access porn elsewhere doesn't give you and the school board a pass on providing it. Just because some bad parents think literature, this literature is okay for their children doesn't, doesn't mean that they can demand other people's children have access to this filth or pay for it. They go too far. The school board chairman promised to block email correspondence who send him the filthy language contained in one of these books. If he, as a man of a certain age, acknowledges it's not appropriate for himself, what's his rational reason for allowing it to be available to children? There is no rational reason. You don't get to be a righteous defender of children while complicit in protecting these books and the actions of the Board of Education and its director. If you condone the continuing grooming of our children, you are not a safe person for our children to be around. If you agree these books are wholly inappropriate for children and taxpayers should not be required to provide them, I expect you to vote for Resolution 2309-14 tonight to protect the children. Now is the time to show your commitment to and courage on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Kevin Baker.
Kevin Baker, 424 AB Wade Road. I really probably should prepare some notes, but I decided not to. Well, I never have notes. But I brought my reference materials, the Constitution of Tennessee and the Constitution of the United States. I would have brought my Bible, but that would have maybe invoked another frivolous lawsuit against the county, and I didn't want to be part of that. I already was once. When I started thinking about what I was going to say, I may predate myself by saying that, anybody remember Yogi Berra and some of his crazy phrases? Déjà vu all over again? The thing that I'm, I'm talking about is, as my wife talked about, what, what was done on Monday night? I stand here in front of you all to tell you that the citizens of, of Sumner County support our law enforcement. They support everything that we're constitutionally required to do. And I'm also telling you this, that Article Four, Section Four of the U.S. Constitution guarantees us a republican form of government, which means when a few of us, myself included, come in here and demand certain things, you don't have to listen to us. You listen to the 8,300 and however many people are in your district, and you represent them, not a special interest group, whether it be Sumner Taxpayer Alliance, or like in 2014, 2019, when all the teachers came in here and demanded $4,000 pay increases. Okay? But I also want to give you a little bit of a history lesson, because it's important for you all to know something. On January 26, 2015, we filled this room with 1,500 or so, standing-room-only citizens, and we asked politely to reconsider the tax increase. Fell on deaf ears. 2019, August 4th, I think it was, I did write these down, August 19th, 2019, was the day that we, the room was filled with teachers preemptively. Us citizens couldn't even get in the door. But you know something that was effective? There's a third date that I all want you to remember. Let me just make sure I get this right. August 4th, 2022, you know what that date was? That was the date that you all were elected to represent the 8,000 people, not a special interest group. I'm here to tell you that we support you. If we need to pay our, our law enforcement people, we pay them. Don't play games. It was, maybe that's how business was done in the past. Maybe that's how the game was played. I think the people in, in America in Sumner County in Tennessee are tired of those games. Let's talk about it. I, for one, will stand here. I will never, ever turn down a tax increase if you sell me on it, but don't do it behind my back. Don't come and hold a gun to my head and expect me to, to say, "Oh, I either back the blue or I pay more in taxes. Can't we work something out here?" But I want to just leave you with that, that you all work for all of us, not just, so don't listen when a few people come in here, myself included, and demand you to do something. So, thank you, and God bless you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We have, we have now the Report of the Chair, and we have received correspondence from Commissioner Baker-Rings, and it states, "Thank you for the flower, floral arrangements sent to my mother's funeral. Your thoughtfulness means so much to us, Commissioner Baker-Ring." Your veteran's service report is attached in, in your, with your agenda. At this time, we have certificates of recognition, and first will be the county mayor, who will read a proclamation concerning Holiday Fest.
Can we get everybody up here from Holiday Fest? All right. So this morning, I got the, had the honor to recognize SRO officers. I was able to emcee the Champions of Valor Breakfast, where the Holiday Fest organization recognized some officers, as well as raised money for the CASA program. This is just one of many things that they're going to be doing across Sumner County during the Christmas season, which seems to start earlier every year. But, but nevertheless, I want to thank you all for the work that you do across Sumner County, for the various charities that you represent. And as county mayor, I want to read this proclamation. It's a proclamation declaring Holiday Fest in Sumner County from October 1st, 2023, to January 31st, 2024. Whereas, the county of Sumner proclaims that the holiday spirit will begin in Sumner County on October 1, 2023, and will include annual parades and shall end on January 31, 2024. Whereas, the county of Sumner has been selected to lead the holidays in Tennessee with, in the areas of holiday fashion show, annual tree lightings, annual breakfast with Santa, annual Appalachian Christmas storytelling, annual boat parade, annual St. Nicholas Ball, annual Christmas tree elegance, and the annual Christmas parades. And whereas, the county of Sumner will hold the Holiday Fest celebrations, which were established in 2007 to conduct and enjoy the true spirit of the season, while becoming a Sumner County holiday tradition, which honors community, creativity, literacy, charity, and volunteerism. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by County Mayor John C. Isbell on October 1, 2023, to January 31st, 2024, shall be proclaimed Holiday Fest in Sumner County, Tennessee, to establish the holiday spirit and encourage all citizens to participate in these special holiday celebrations, which build traditions and a spirit of giving for our county.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose light sign. Let's give them a...
Thank you, guys, very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and tell you about some of the things that Holiday Fest has done and is going to do this year. We had the Champions of Valor... We had the Champions of Valor Breakfast this morning, as Mayor Isbell said, honor on our SROs, and we had a great turnout for that. We do a number of things, as, as Mayor Isbell said, in the proclamation, with parades and get-togethers and balls. A new event that we're having is this weekend, if you are not aware of it, but have a, a liking to wine and food. There is a wine tasting at Saunders Ferry Park in Hendersonville. The dinner is Friday night. It's, might be sold out at this time, but a more family-friendly thing on Saturday from, I think, 4 to 10 o'clock at Saunders Ferry Park. There's plenty of things to come out and see. There's wines to sample, there's food to sample, and it's just another event that we're going to have, and that actually benefits the Shalom Zone here in Gallatin. So, everything that we do is connected to a 501(c)(3) that is here in Sumner County. So, everything that we raise stays right here in, in our county. So, anything you can do to help us, to participate, please come out and be a part of it. Come to the balls, come to the parades, come to the tree lightings. There's so much to do, and I think that most of our stuff will be in the standard newspapers. So, if you want to follow along with what we're doing and when we're doing it, so you'll know when to come along and have fun with us. So, again, thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Volunteers, and we have raised, in 18 years, $3.9 million to the charities.
At this time, um, we will have Commissioner Rogers come forward. We'll be recognizing two of our sheriff's deputies who are retiring, and the mayor may want to come up and join him.
Deputy Gambino and Deputy Broner, y'all can come up with continued service. I don't think we're going out the door on retirement. This is just recognizing their efforts. So, on April the 26, 2023, at approximately 14:36 hours, K-9 Deputy Brian Gambino was conducted to traffic stop in Westmoreland, that's in the north part of the county, just in case you didn't know. Was conducting a traffic stop with a black Nissan Versa for no registration, hard to believe, and the driver did have a suspended driver's license. Driver of the vehicle pulled into his residence where contact was made by Deputy Gambino, observed several indicators that associated with criminal activity. Deputy Gambino asked for consent to search the vehicle, but the driver refused. We'll go to more of that in a minute. K-9 Jacks was deployed for an open-air sniff of the vehicle and alerted to the odor of narcotics in the area of, of the gas door on the driver's side. Based on the alert, Deputy Gambino conducted a probable cause search of the vehicle and located approximately one ounce of crystal methamphetamine. A subsequent consent search of the residence was also conducted. The search yielded approximately an additional two ounces of crystal methamphetamine, three grams of fentanyl, $3,678 in drug proceeds, 46 pipes, and various items, including scales and baggies commonly used for packing, packaging illegal narcotics for the sale. Suspect was subsequently transported to Sumner County Jail on the following charges: resale of Schedule II, which is methamphetamines, Schedule II fentanyl, felony possession of drug paraphernalia, driving while in possessions of meth, driving on suspended license, and various display plates. Guys, the dogs work. The dogs work. This is living proof, the dogs work. His partner found stuff that he couldn't find by the sniff. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present the certificate of recognition to Deputy Brian Gambino with the Sumner County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular, regular session this 18th day of September, 2023. Recognize Deputy Brian Gambino as valiant work in the line of duty on April the 26, 2023, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers and second by...
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lambert. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And please, before we give them a round of applause, forget everything I said about retirement.
We retired and reinstated on the same night. Congratulations. This other guy is a name that's familiar with the sheriff's office. Deputy James Broner and his K-9 partner Flex. Sunday, May 28, K-9 Deputy James Broner, obviously Sumner County Sheriff's Department, assistant locating the subject, wanted for aggravated assault and possibly rape. A deputy on the scene advised he had served a male flea from his residence, um, to the direction of the woods, which was located behind the house where Deputy Broner was located. Started K-9 Flex on his track, immediately observed to be an odor and actively tracking the subject. Flex tracked from the door. It was suspected to have fled from, toward the woods and stayed close to the shrubs, made a semicircle in the residence backyard. Deputy on the scene advised he previously observed a door that was open, is now is closed, was leading into basement, and that's in the direct path of which K-9 Flex was tracking. No deputies on the scene had entered the doorway. K-9 brought, brought K-9 Flex to the basement to conduct a room search, challenged the suspect, and then issued a command for K-9 Flex to search the room. Deputy Broner observed K-9 Flex sniffing around an object covered with a plastic tarp. At this time, a voice from underneath the tarp said, "Yo, that dog is going to bite me? Is that dog gonna bite me?" Deputy Broner recalled K-9 Flex at that time and secured him. Deputy Broner challenged the suspect to exit from under the tarp, or the dog would be deployed and he would get bit. The suspect stated he was coming out, observed emerging from under the tarp, and surrendered to deputies. The suspect was taken into custody without incident and transported, transported to Sumner County Jail. Guys, both of these is proof that the dogs work, the partners work. These articles that I just read is not just some story that was written, these were actually published. In the Nation, K-9 Magazine, as of the region 13 of this area, these officers actually received, um, kudos, I guess, for the, from the trainers, that their stories made it into this. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize Deputy James Broner with the Sumner, or Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session, the 18th day of September, 2023, does hereby, and commit Deputy James Broner for his valiant work in the line of duty on May 28, 2023, and I so move. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you. Appreciate you, guys.
I'd like for the group from Merrill Hyde Magnet School to come forward. I have a distinct honor this evening to recognize one of our schools, and we have with us some of the teachers, the directors of schools, and the principal here with us tonight. We're very excited about that. Each year, the U.S. News Magazine does a very thorough research nationwide to determine the best schools in America. And this year, the Merrill Hyde Magnet School ranked number one in the state of Tennessee, best high school, right here in our county. And they ranked number 31 in the nation, and that is quite an honor. And I'll tell you, it takes a lot of people to do that. It takes students who are desiring to learn. It takes teachers who are dedicated and committed. It takes administrators, all the way up to the director of schools, who is supportive and believes in achieving the, the most they can. So, we are very pleased this evening to have these teachers, staff members, and students here with us. I'd like to ask if, at this time, if someone would make the motion to Commissioner Becker and second by Commissioner Teachinger. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And wait just a moment, if you will. We have the principal, who will be recognized, and he'll sort of direct things from this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde, and to the commission. Appreciate the opportunity. The commission has always been very active and supportive of all of our schools in Sumner County, from the nitty-gritty work that you guys do, as well as the public recognition. And thank you for the support. Thank you for the hard work, even when it's not easy. And congratulations to the other honorees tonight. A recognition of a school like this is, it's very humbling, it's very honorable, but it doesn't happen in a vacuum, and tonight, it's, it's most important that you hear from some of the people who actually did the hard work. I would like to introduce some of the teachers that are brought with me tonight. This is Ms. Candy R. Wood, who has been at Merrill Hyde since 2004. This is Amy DeMoss, second-grade teacher. This is Andrea Morgan, who teaches sixth and seventh grade language arts. Over here is Mr. Joe Caldwell, who teaches sixth and seventh grade science. And then we have three students here, and it's because of the teachers and the students and the families that are, that is where our success rests. So, I'd just ask Mr. Jesual Williams, Mr. Kami Sahihi, and Ms. Lana Hickman, just to share, just for less than a minute, what the, what the school means to them.
Hello. My name is Lana Hickman, and I am currently a junior at Merrill Hyde Magnet School. Throughout my high school experience, I have enjoyed the easy access to student-led clubs. At Merrill Hyde, I'm the president of two clubs and a member of eight other clubs. I believe these student-led clubs allows students to get an experience on how to lead a group in advance. And being able to be a part of these clubs allows me to share my special interests with other students that I may otherwise not talk to normally, or people that are outside of my friend group. For clubs such as Girl Up and Culture Club, I believe it allows students from multiple different perspectives to come together and share their ideas over a subject. It becomes a safe place for students, where they know they can be themselves without being afraid of outside judgments.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Sahihi, and I've been going to Merrill Hyde for four years now. When I say that, especially to my peers, people are always like, "Oh," with the expression on their face, like, "That must be tough," or, "I bet the teachers are really strict there." But it's not that at all. See, at Merrill Hyde, the idea of Padilla is used, and that's used in every single one of my classes. Padilla creates open-ended discussion and creates a more well-rounded student. I see this in all of my teachers, and this creates such a good environment to speak open and freely. See, I'm sure almost every one of you kind of remembers your high school days, and you would hear those keys jingling, and you would see, "Oh, no, the principal's coming." Or you would run to your class, or you'd run to the bathroom and all that. But it's not like that at our school. See, through Padilla and through all those communication skills that we gain, I can say, "Oh, Mr. Frank's coming. Let's go say hi." So that's why I feel Merrill Hyde is right for me, and that's why I'm forever thankful, and I take pride in saying I go to Merrill Hyde Magnet School. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jesual Williams, and I'm a junior at Merrill Hyde. And one thing that makes Merrill Hyde different from other schools is that, because it's a magnet school, it attracts students from all around to come there, and they're all like-minded in the way that they all care deeply about their academics. Kids here, they push each other to do better in every single class. I've been to other schools. I came to Merrill Hyde in seventh grade, and I can say that it's not like that for everybody. At Merrill Hyde, me and my peers are always like, "Let's get together, let's study, let's do good for our next test," and we hold each other to a higher standard than we would if we went to a school that didn't focus as deeply on academics. And also, because the school is so small, it creates a space for us to become connected with our teachers on a deeper level, whereas if there were, let's say, a thousand kids in our high school, the teachers wouldn't be able to associate as much time to their students and help them excel. But here at Merrill Hyde, all the teachers have the goal to help their students, however few of the students may be, and help them achieve, to do things the best that they can. Thank you.
Director, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I think, you know, when you read the news about what Merrill Hyde Magnet School accomplishes, when you see not just the academic performance, but the well-rounded students that are produced at the Magnet, at Merrill Hyde Magnet School, they excel in sports, they excel in extracurriculars. They also excel in giving back to their community. The whole goal of a Padilla school is to build young men and women of character, and I think you see that in the three that spoke tonight, and the teachers that are gathered here. If you get the opportunity to see them teach and work, it's really special and it's exceptional to watch. And I want to take a moment, because Mr. Frank does not like to be honored. If you noticed, he's drifted back there. But it takes a special person to lead Merrill Hyde Magnet School, and Mr. Frank sets the bar very high for the kids, because he not only pushes academic excellence, extracurricular excellence, all forms of excellence, but he demonstrates that himself, and he pours himself into each student at Merrill Hyde, each teacher, each staff member, and does everything he can to enrich, enrich their experience. And we're also thankful for Mr. Hyde and for the opportunity to have Merrill Hyde Magnet School, and thankful for the good things that they do each day. And, you know, I think, over the course of the school, it's evolved a couple times, and it's exciting to see where y'all are now taking Merrill Hyde Magnet School. So, thank you, because you're the reason why we do what we do, is to, is to provide for y'all a future where there will be jobs that we can't even imagine what they are. But to have students that can think, that can collaborate, that can work together, you're prepared for whatever you'll face, and it's going to be really exciting to watch y'all do exceptional things. So, thank you.
Now you can applaud. We need to consider under E what we will do about our October schedule. Does anyone have any suggestions on this? Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Knowing that, I guess Columbus Day is on, I believe, the Monday, the 9th, and the county offices are closed, October has five different Mondays. So, my suggestion is move committee on committees, legislative and budget, and that committee slate to October the 16th, and then move the full commission from October the 16th to October the 23rd. Just move everything, those two. Keep the first slate of meetings still on that first Monday in October, and then Columbus Day, and the next Monday, legislative and budget and those committees, and then the fourth Monday would be the full commission. So, that's my motion.
All right. Motion and a second by whom? Commissioner Harrison? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So, we have established the October schedule. Number three is concerning a delinquent tax sale, sale of Jason Court property. He gives the Mountain Parcel number. Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by, who made the second? Second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. A report of county officials, you have those written reports on, on your desk, and now we will vote on notaries. If the clerk will put that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Before we declare the vote, they're not sure about a second. Who, who made the motion? Commissioner Becker, who was the second? Commissioner... Mansfield? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right. All right. That was a unanimous vote. Report of standing committees, and first will be Health and Emergency Services. Thank you, thank you. Education.
Yes, sir. I recommend these resolutions, and I so move.
All right. Motion to group and approve by Commissioner Becker. Is there a second to that? Commissioner Harris? All in favor, any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. General operations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commission, I wanted to give you an update on some of the capital improvements in the county. Turner Construction did reach their completion date of today. So after this, we will be working at the county level to move in. The parking structure is, at best, scheduled to be finished in April. Conservatively, they expect, because our director there knows the patterns of the weather, that he can pretty much expect that we won't be completed with that till June, June first. And then finally, the archive roof has been put out to bid, and that bid cycle should be completed this Thursday.
Thank you for that information. Highway Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In Highway Committee, we spoke about accepting the proposed roads of Baker Purdue Estates, a portion there and a portion of Creteview Estates, section four.
Second.
All right. Motion to accept these roads, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harrison. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Committee on Committees, Commissioner Mansfield?
No report, Mr. Chairman. For Legislative?
Legislative, Commissioner Mansfield?
Twenty-three oh nine dash eleven. It's a resolution establishing procedures for Sumner County employees to introduce and escalate complaints. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Mansfield. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just looking over the resolution, just had a question. There was a lot of, "Report to, if you have a problem, report to your supervisor, or your supervisor's supervisor." Where would I find an org chart for each department?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you were saying.
Where would someone find an org chart for each department?
I'm not sure.
So if someone was to have a question and wasn't sure as far as the reporting structure, we just, there's no guidance with that? We don't have anything for that?
Well, as I said in the committee meeting, this is an unusual situation, in that this is county government, and a lot of this cannot be controlled by the commission. It is constitutional officers who have a great majority of the employees and can do a lot of things according to their own policies and procedures. So it's sort of a mixed bag of things.
Yeah, and that leads to the other point, too, because there's language in there about constitutional office holders, as far as what they're to do in receiving a complaint. And just per your statement, Mr. Chairman, we don't really have the authority to direct them to do anything, as far as their policies, procedures, and how they handle their day-to-day operations.
Well, we have before done things such as established holidays and things of that sort, that we requested the office holders to cooperatively work to establish a unified front with that, and hopefully, and I know most of the county officials are this way, I think they'll be very cooperative.
Okay. And then also, too, there was language in there about the constitutional office holders, and I guess being reported to the Ethics Committee. What role would the Ethics Committee have in that process?
I think, depending upon what the circumstance is and the seriousness of each complaint that reaches the Ethics Committee, will be determined by the legal department.
And also, too, Mr. Hyde, you know, by statute, the Ethics Committee can really only deliberate, and here are two different types of violations, and they're both financial matters. So I'm not exactly sure that this is within the purview of what an Ethics Committee is even supposed to do, as it seems to me to be out of bounds, as far as what the Ethics Committee should be and is intended to be for. Also, Mr. Chairman, so there's some language in there about the Law Director being the point of contact for complaints. And I don't know if this is a question that I can direct to you, or just directly to the Law Director.
Direct it to me, and then I'll direct it if necessary.
With the Law Director being the point of contact for certain escalations, and if these escalations turn into lawsuits, would that not disqualify the Law Director from representing the county?
That could, depending upon each case and what happens with each case.
And then that would result in additional taxpayer dollars having to be spent to represent the county in defense?
Possible.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to just, to make a motion to send this back to committee, and just to get some of these things firmed up before we just push this out. So that's my motion.
Motion to send this back to the committee. Second by Commissioner Ring. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Mansfield? Commissioner Ring? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
No.
I'm going to say the no's have that unless there's a request for a division of the House.
Division.
Okay. If you'll place that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Did everyone, there was some confusion with our machine. Did everyone get their vote cast? And it's fourteen to six, and fails. Commissioner Ring?
Remove the part of this that's under complaints against an official, on the grounds that I don't believe, as the previous commissioner said, I don't believe that's the duty of the Ethics Committee. I believe that's a violation of state statute, and so I think we just need to remove that, please. Thank you.
All right. Motion to remove that section. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Becker. Any discussion? Commissioner Shouf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We believe this resolution has a clause such that it, anything within it that is, could potentially be a violation of state statute, would not apply, so I think we're going to be okay.
I'm having some difficulty myself. Is that possible? Okay. I am told they are up, that we need to speak more directly into the mic, if you will. You can adjust your mic down.
I was in the queue for a while.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Can you hear me? I was going to make a suggestion for the section of complaints against an official. Again, this is a resolution that was brought forward by a Law Director's office. This is a function that's always been a part of the Law Director's office. One thing that I'll commend Mr. Sittler on doing is try to create procedures where they kind of didn't exist, and it was a little bit more loosey-goosey for decades, I guess you could say. And I admire him for trying to bring this forward to have at least something for us to look at, and how things are handled from a policy standpoint. But I was going to make an amendment to any, where under complaints, again, it's an official anywhere else in here. It should say Sumner County Ethics and Conduct Committee, because that's the name of the committee, and it's what it deals with, and it is allowed by state law. So for more expansive, and for us to write it how we did, and so has been confirmed already. So that's my motion to change any word that says Sumner County Ethics Committee, to say Sumner County Ethics and Conduct Committee. I so move.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Mansfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. All right, we're back on the First Amendment. Is that you, Commissioner Becker, on that? Okay.
I just want to understand, I think, we couldn't hear what Commissioner Shouf mentioned a second ago. I think I thought him say, heard him say that there's a clause that says if anything's against state law or something. I don't, is that clause not in here? Is that not what he said? Apologize. What, we couldn't hear you at all. If he could repeat what he said.
Are you asking him?
Yes, I'm sorry. If we can get clarification on what he said.
Yeah, and I'm going to clarify that I was, I was actually incorrect, and I'm going to make an amendment. I'm going to offer an amendment, just to capture what Mr. Ring said. So on the first, be it resolved, if you start at eighteenth day of September 2023, comma, that, this is my amendment, insert, "Consistent with Tennessee Code Annotated, comma, this body does hereby approve." That's my motion.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. I think Commissioner Mansfield. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. All right, we go back. Commissioner Ring, would you repeat what you had suggested?
Thank you. I was just suggesting that referring this to the Ethics Committee might be in violation of state statutes, and this has, amendment has changed that. Thank you.
Okay. So are you withdrawing your?
Did we vote on, I thought we voted on my motion.
Okay.
We did.
All right. All in favor of this motion, I need us, we've done all the amendments, we need the main motion, if there's a motion. On the main motion and not on the amendment? Okay. All right, just so everybody understands it, fine with it. All right. Number two, Mr. Chairman. Well, that's what I was saying, and you said you had. All right, the main motion, is there, you've made the motion, and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. I didn't remember us doing that, but I was taking your word for it. Okay. Okay, go ahead. We don't want to correct you.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash twelve, appointing Starless Keane as Judicial Magistrate, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mansfield. Second by Commissioner Shouf. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash thirteen, I had the Law Director Office print out a copy. I did add, ironically enough, an amendment to this today, that I want to, I want to move to amend what's in the packet with this new, be it further resolved, at the bottom of page one, and I'll read it. It says, "This resolution does not apply to grants previously authorized by the commission that are longstanding grants or yearly recurring grants unless the Office of the Law Director deems a review necessary due to questions or material changes in the terms and conditions so identified by the department head or other person having authority to execute said grant." I'll wait for a second, so I can.
Thanks.
All right. Motion and a second.
So I believe that addresses Judge Blanton's concerns, or any other grant that might come through the Drug Court, through their courts, through even like EMA, or there's something through the Sheriff's Office or EMS. It's not affecting regularly recurring yearly grants that come up. This is not applying to that. This is applying to new grants, such as you alluded to earlier, where we've been getting caught off guard on some things, and some problems have been caused. So I believe this be it further resolved satisfies to what Judge Blanton was speaking towards the public comments, so.
Okay, we have three people in the queue, so obviously it did not satisfy. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I was just looking to see if Judge Blanton was still here, just if we could suspend the rules and maybe get his opinion. I don't know if he's here, though. Okay. Okay. He left.
All right. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has any of the other department heads reviewed this at all? Has anybody else seen this and given any feedback?
I'm not sure whether they have. Not only they could tell you whether they have had an opportunity to look at the packet and review it.
Okay. Is that something that we can ask the committee, if this was circulated to any department heads, or was it socialized in any way?
You could certainly ask that it be sent back to the committee for that to be done.
Yeah, and I think it's prudent to do that, because nothing's going to break between now and next month without, with this resolution, but potentially this resolution could cause something to break if it's not done correctly. So I would just ask that this be sent back to committee, allow the department heads to digest it, look over it, give feedback, and then let's bring it back next month after we've received that feedback, and just to make sure that we're okay, that this isn't going to impede anybody else, like the Drug Court, you know, that what was added probably does, but there may be something else that we just don't know about. So I want to be very careful here with that, before we just decide to put this in place.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Shouf. Any discussion? Please raise your hand, because I have one or two in the queue. Commissioner Klein, is this to the amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm trying to think of, besides the legal, anybody who would be going, I mean, the courts, anybody who would be looking for a grant besides our grant writer. Do you know of any other department?
I personally do not.
Do not? Okay.
Anyone else, please raise your hand if you want to speak to the amendment. Commissioner Shouf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have the pleasure of sitting next to Finance Director and the sheriff, and both of them mentioned that there are EMA, Sheriff's Department, several departments, maybe potentially impacted this. I think the spirit of this is great. I want to do it, but I don't think anything's going to hurt to go back a month, and both of these gentlemen mentioned that it may be worth a review here, so I think it's wise to send this back for a month.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to this? I'll ask the clerk to put it on the board. This is to send it back to committee for review for one more month.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right. Vote was twenty-one. How do you want to record? How do you want to record your vote, Commissioner? Yes, okay. All right, that will be sent back to committee for review.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash fourteen, a resolution to protect children, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Mansfield, and I heard someone here, Commissioner Brown? Any discussion? Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've read this resolution through several times and there is one area that I, I think is maybe misstated, I hope it's misstated and I, and I think it is. In the fifth whereas, where it says adults and children are increasingly over-sexualized in our nation, state, and county, I think that may have intended to read overtly rather than over, because if you can over-sexualize, you can also by definition under, and I don't think that's what was intended here. So I'm going to move to amend this resolution to change that wording from over-sexualized to overtly sexualized and I so move.
Motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion to that? Commissioner Ring? Commissioner, when? Main motion. All right, well, let's get this on the board and get this amendment out of the way.
Each commissioner reports her vote.
All right, 18 to 3, that will be changed. Commissioner Ring?
I don't know why it's necessary to have four pages printed here that contain offensive materials, no context whatsoever, we're just placing offensive materials in our record. I move that everything after the resolution, the four pages immediately following the resolution be excised from the minutes and from the record and from this resolution.
Motion, is there a second? No second? What was the motion?
The motion was to excise the area, if I may restate it, the four pages after the resolution, at the end of the resolution where it says Certificate of Action, County Clerk, that says content. There's no context and I make, my motion is that it all be excised. Those four pages, removed.
For lack of a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner, when seconds that motion. Commissioner Jones, is this on that amendment? Commissioner Becker, do you want to speak to this amendment?
It may, it may be here, I'm just overlooking it, but these passages, what book, like, are they all from like one book or is it, does it say it here? I'm just overlooking. I'm not sure where all, I mean, I've, I've read skimmed through a lot of these and, and obviously it's, you know, some interesting stuff for sure, but, but I couldn't see what, like where they were pulled from, like what, what books or whatever. Is, is that in there somewhere I'm just missing? If, if not, I think it'd be appropriate to add that information.
Commissioner Mansfield, can you answer that?
I did mention it during legislative, these three excerpts, they're not on this number, so I can't remember exactly which ones at this time. So I'd be glad to answer some questions or, or explain a little bit where this resolution came from, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, yes, please. I'm, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious if, or. Number one, what books are these from and then I guess we call them that, are these books that are currently, what, what's the, the relevance of those books for this resolution, I guess?
I'd be glad to answer those questions. So, like I explained in legislative on Monday night, part of this resolution reads, whereas the exposure to and normalization of sexualized behaviors reduces children's inhibitions and ability to protect themselves from the sexual advances of others. Second, whereas on the next page, top of the page, whereas children learn from observing and subsequently acting out the behaviors they have observed, children who have observed sexualized behaviors, who have been the victim of sexual assault, may act out with other children at home or school, which may lead to additional child victims. And what brought this about, this is something that Knox County is putting forward, it's been put forward in other states and somebody approached me and asked if I would consider putting this on an agenda for Sumter County. You know, our culture and our communities, our community standards are at a crossroads. More and more, we're hearing about across the nation, about sexually explicit materials being available in school libraries that violate state laws and are available to minors. And across the nation, this is an, I would call it say an epidemic, parents are being reprimanded, caught out of order, even forcibly removed from school board meetings for reading materials aloud such as these from those meetings. And if these, these materials are so vile, degenerative, disgusting that parents are censored when reading them aloud in the presence of adults, if this is the case, why would anyone think that having these in schools for minor aged children is okay and using our taxpayer dollars to subsidize it? And what brought this up in his plea to the school board, Mr. Lacy laments that a book called The Blueest Eye, which I believe is the first one mentioned, the first one on this, this sheet. He says it plants a seed for 14 to 18 year olds on how they can seduce little girls. They can get mints, they can get money and ice cream, and little girls will allow you to play between their legs. That is what this book talks about. And my question is, what in the literal hell is stuff like this doing in our public libraries and our school system? So due to these recent revelations that school board members such as Mr. King, Mr. Lacy, have been bringing forward to the school board meetings and not having their voices heard, not having ta, actions taken unless they go out into social media, then all of a sudden it magically disappears the next day in two schools at the same time. It's important to address these things because, and I felt it was timely, given the recent things that I've heard from our school board members and the fact that this last month in August, we were asked to pass a resolution for this month declaring September Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Awareness Month. So if we want to talk about the mental health crisis with children, you can't do that with talk about the over-sexualization children or overtly sexualizing our children. It's an important discussion and discussing it in the public doesn't mean you have a fetish toward it or a bend towards it. I would argue that anybody who defends this material in the school has a fetish or a bend toward it. It's unacceptable. When you, when you look at the desensitization of, desensitizing children to sexual advances such as the example given by Mr. Lacy, I think this is important because it acknowledges the dangers of exposure to and normalization of a sexualized behaviors that would reduce children's inhibitions to protect themselves from the sexual advances of others, such as the example given by Mr. Lacy. Another school board member recently shared with me, and he said this, and I thought it was a good statement, books transfer the reader to that place and time, so in that respect, we are transporting minors to actively watch in their brains eliciting responses, to watch physical acts of sexual abuse, sexual assault, and sexual acts. And there's no place for that, in my opinion. All the parents that I've talked to, some of our minority of our school board members at this time, it's their opinion that it doesn't have any place. So when other counties are bringing forth a resolution to protect children about hyper sexualization of, of their children and declaring that no resources will be allocated to activities, programs, events, content, or institutions which support, normalize, or encourage the sexualization of children and youth, I think that's important and we make a stand as a county, we're not going to involve not just with hyperbole, but put our money where our mouth is, we're not going to fund it, whether that's in our libraries, whether that's county events, we're not going to fund things that desensitize, desensitize children to sexual advances of predators out there. And that, and you look at our culture today and sex trafficking is the number one industry in the world. This is what this is about, a lot of statistics is a, in a handout that didn't make it to the packet about human trafficking. How do kids get desensitized to sexual advances? Well, it's like board member Lacy talked about, is how, how they can seduce little girls. This book on one of these pages talks about, it's a pedophile who's only attracted to minor aged girls and how to do it. So regardless of what it's a story about, I agree with the school board member that said you were, you were basically projecting that into kids' minds and planting seeds and influence. And you can do that, tell stories in a lot of different ways, but again, Senator John Kennedy gave a, a speech at a Senate hearing on national news that made it, a book I think called Gender Queer, and he was reading passages from the floor of Congress about these really crude sexually explicit graphic content that has no place in our system of education and our institutions and it just doesn't have a place. That's just not the community standards of Sumter County. May fit in Davidson, Nash Francisco is it being called now, or may be in San Francisco, but it doesn't belong in Sumter County. This is not who we are as a county, these materials. And I just find it interesting that anybody would actually just try to fight the addition of sexually explicit and graphic materials and depictions of sec acts in schools, making them available to minors when state law explicitly says the opposite. So I, I hope somebody brings up a criminal charge. It's what needs to happen against those who are promoting this. It's really what needs to happen, it's a crime. So that is why I put this on the agenda because I was asked to by Knox County. I know there's other counties that are doing this and even in different states. So you want to look at the stats on human trafficking, sex trafficking, suicide rates, people who are sexually abused have a high incidence of suicide. And people get sexually abused, I think statistically the highest rate is people they know in their families, they know in their communities, same household, neighbors, it is an intimate connection. And what better way to get intimate with somebody by desensitizing them with materials that brings their guard down and they think that's just acceptable now, to me, it just opens a door to hell that we don't want to open in this county. It needs to be shut hard and tight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, we have a number of people in the queue and I'm not sure if you want to speak to this amendment. Would you raise your hand, please, and I'll try to go by the order that I see the queue here. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, just going back to my question. So I, I guess, and again, I, I don't, it's sort of like back to book, just because people are asking questions, that doesn't, does not mean, and I'll speak for himself, does not mean I, 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 I am in favor of any of this stuff because this is, this is, this is bad. But I would like to know, and if we're going to include this, these passages, I, I personally, I, I would like to know if the name of the book of each passage and if that book is currently in our schools, like, I mean, it, it could be, this is, some of this stuff is, is awful. Most, most all of it is, but I mean, I don't know sitting here if, I mean, are these even in our school? I, I don't know the answer to that. And so I, I'm assuming that they are, but I don't know that for sure without having that information.
I will ask Mr. Mansfield to respond to that.
The answer to, to of the books is yes. The answer to one of the books, it was removed after Mr. King went through the process of asking it to be removed and his, it was, his voice wasn't heated and he went to make the public known, parents know about it, one evening about a week or two ago and the next morning, the, the one book, it was the one, I think it's the second, it's basically the one that's talking about having sex with Jesus. That's the book, if you want to know. That one did get removed from two schools, my understanding. You know, What Girls Were Made Of. The Blueest Eye has not been removed. Mr. Lacy spoke about that at the school board meeting about a week or two ago, about two weeks ago. It's, my understanding, it's still in schools. That's the one that's the graphic depictions of pedophilia. And, and the third one, it's the third, it should be the third attachment, that one was basically, I think challenged and still in the school. The wirefly, Percival Wirefly.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess my opinion, I'm either, I'm, I'm fine leaving this in here if the book names are listed, but without the book names, I, I would, I don't know if I'm in favor of keeping this in here because it's, it's very confusing. So, okay, thank you.
Those are choices we will have to make at the right time. Any, let me see the hands of anyone else on this list that wants to speak to the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, speak to the amendment.
Yes.
I've said nothing about this resolution whatsoever, not one word. My amendment and my concern is we have four pages of graphic language without, with no context whatsoever. In addition, I'm not sure we ought to be putting this type of language in the public record. We've had, we've. We've been doing, we've done this before, this commission has, as well as the Board of Education. If we want, don't want children to see this, then why are we putting it somewhere where children can see it? Which is exactly what we do and we put in the public record. Anybody can get online and see this. I just don't, I think there's no context to this and I don't see any point of this. None of this is even mentioned in the resolution. It's just random, to me, it appears to be, random sentences or random phrases that are just added in here with no context whatsoever and I don't see the point. So my motion stands to remove those four pages.
All right. I did not see any other hands go up, so I'm going to put that on the board. Now I have the clerk place that on the board for a vote.
And once you've restated.
Pardon?
Would you restate it?
Would you restate your amendment?
Remove the four pages of passages that, that follow the resolution.
Yes, to remove and no.
Right. All right, she will place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
With a vote of 18 to 4, that motion fails. We will be back on the main motion. Commissioner, when?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comments that Mr. Mansfield chaired. I think there was a lot of good points in there as far as the atrocity of, of just human trafficking and the things that go on that our youth have to, to really be concerned with along with parents today with just their kids. This resolution, it cites TBI data on the average age of kids sold into human trafficking in our country, or at least that's what it appeared to be at a country level. And these are great statistics that point out, you know, just a horror in our society. But there's also TBI data that's Sumter County specific on sexual assaults in, in Sumter County. So in 2021, 95 kids under the age of 18 were victims of sexual assault by either a family member, intimate partner, or an acquaintance. And so, you know, I think this resolution, it really brings up the point or an opportunity is that how can we truly impact this besides just these words in this paper pointing out some books? I, I think we're missing an opportunity. We're completely missing the, really the ability to, to make an impact on, for our kids and the safety of our kids. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to offer an amendment to this resolution. And just an amendment that would state the creation of an ad hoc committee that serves as a task force to make recommendations to all of our governing bodies in our county. as a task force to make recommendations to all of our governing bodies in our county to address threats to our children. Threats like our current mental health crisis, which was talked about. We know that's a problem. We know we need some help there. And which the TBI data actually points out is a bigger issue than the books that we're talking about or the language in books that we're talking about. So the task force, it should include leaders from our nonprofits and counseling centers like Ashley's Place or the BAB Center, our faith leaders throughout our county, our principals and administrators, our criminal court judges, and anyone else that they recommend that can offer a solution and get to, and address the root issue while working alongside of the TBI and other state agencies in fighting this issue and finding a solution that works.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Becker. Now, I would like to see hands of any who would like to speak to the amendment. Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, that sounds like a great idea. I just feel like that is a very different thing and doesn't really fit as an amendment. I will be against it as an amendment, not against it in principle, I just, I mean, I think it's a good idea. That would be something to consider at a, as a totally separate resolution. That's my thought on that amendment.
I'm all for the amendment, with one exception, immediately remove all the pornographic crap from our school libraries. The parents are sick and tired of having to contact their representatives and being ignored. They're being exposed to all this kind of language. I think your amendment's good, but let's remove, let's immediately call for the removal of all this garbage from our school libraries, and until it's done, close them. Don't let the students check out any books until we're certain that all this stuff is off our school shelves, because it shouldn't be there in the first place. And it's kind of sad that we're sitting here debating this. This is common sense. These parents don't want this garbage in the hands of their children.
Commissioner Tishner.
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, this came up in discussion and about going further than the resolution did, but, and I made the comment that it was kind of like hitching a trailer to a boat. Both could be good in many ways, but the logic of putting them together was a little bit odd. But regardless, I think it's wonderful. But what I would encourage is, if this gets voted down, that I would encourage my fellow commissioner to come before the chairman of legislative and work with him and just see how we can get, you know, something that is further and something that's not just dismissed, you know? Because I've not spoken to one person in my district who is for it, and I think this is just something else that's happening on the national stage. It's a distraction. There's moral absolutes. I think a lot of folks still believe that. And, I mean, so it's easy to distract over things that everyone would agree is wrong while we're constantly moving toward other agendas, you know, that are sneaking by, like, you know, just making us more and more government-led. And I think that this is one, for instance, we're discussing something that seems like the biggest no-brainer that we've had in the county. And so I just, I have to say that, that any of these ideas that are for further action that would support what the citizens want, I believe that the place is always for committee. I think we should always come before committee and speak to the chairman and see how it can get on the agenda there, and we can go through due process and it's debated in public. The public can come up and speak on that, and it gives the public the chance for input, because that's something the public is far overdue, is chance for input. So I think they wanted to hear less of us speaking, so I'm going to sit down.
I saw no other hands, so I'll ask the clerk to place this on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, make one more comment on just the motion. So I think the resolution does a good job of telling what we're not going to do. From a county perspective, and anything that would promote or further, you know, the sexualization of kids. I think it's highly important and very appropriate that we also define what we are going to do. So it's one thing to point out a problem, it's a whole different thing to actually fix it. So, I mean, it's great we've identified something, but let's move towards fixing a problem. That's all I got.
All right. The Commissioner Klein.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. Is, is the amendment meant to abandon the resolution and then create an ad hoc, or is it meant to pass the resolution and recommend an ad hoc?
I will ask clarification on that, but I think it's to stop everything at this point until a committee is appointed, but I'll ask the maker to.
It was the latter. So and, not or?
Yeah.
All right. Restate your motion then, maybe I didn't understand.
Yeah. So it's just to add to it, creating an ad hoc committee to serve a task force to make recommendations to all of our governing bodies in our county to address threats to our children. Threats like our current mental health crisis, which according to the same TBI data is a larger threat to our kids than this resolution addresses. This task force should include leaders from our nonprofits, counseling centers such as Ashley's Place, the BAB Center, faith leaders throughout our county, our school principals and administrators, our criminal court judges, and anyone else that they recommend that can offer solutions to get to and address the root issues and work alongside the TBI and other state agencies, resources, in fighting this issue and finding solutions that work.
So what I'm hearing you, the long and short of it is that you are forepassing this resolution with your amendment for us to appoint a committee later to go even further.
An ad hoc committee of that composition, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Klein? Seeing no other hands speaking to this amendment, I'll ask the clerk to place this on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And that passes fifteen to six, so that.
The button didn't work this time.
Pardon?
Mine didn't work this time.
Oh, okay. How do you want to vote, Commissioner?
Say yes, please.
All right. This may cause some to not necessarily want to speak further on the main motion, but we are on the main motion. Commissioner Brown?
I did a search whenever I looked at the American Library Association. And I found that we had six of those books that were challenged by this list, that they had the ten most challenged books, according to the American Library Association, a Marxist And the first one that I found was The Bluest Eye. That was, and I sent all this information to our four board members that are concerned about this. And The Bluest Eye is found in White House, it has four copies of it. Station Camp has one, and Gallatin has one. And there's more, like I say, it's Flamer, Looking for Alaska, Perks of Bean Wallflower, which was retained in our libraries. Another one, Long Boy, which was removed. And The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. This one right here is, this one was rated a two on Booklets, two out of five. But this one, I thought, was very offensive myself, extremely racist, talking about masturbating quite a lot. And the last one was Crank. Like I say, we had six of them, six out of ten of the ALA's most challenged books in our libraries. So I forwarded all this information to our board members, and they, and Mr. Lacy decided to take The Bluest Eye to task. I don't, I know that the School Board Policy book does not tie itself to the ALA, which is good, but still, again, they're taking a lot of comments from them. World Library Association, which is a conservative organization, is a whole lot better. I don't know why we don't subscribe to that one. But in looking at this, our law here in Tennessee does not have the teeth to take care of any of this. And so what happened in legislative committee, we decided that we're looking at the Missouri law, which has teeth in it, because they removed all these books. They took the head librarian and a lawyer, and they went through all the libraries in the state of Missouri, and they're gone. And so we're going to try and offer a resolution, try and mimic the same law, and hopefully we can get some teeth into that law, into Tennessee code. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I voted against the amendment just for the reasons stated before by Commissioner Tishner. I just didn't think it fit well with this, but I am for the ideas of going forward to do more than just this, and I appreciate Commissioner Nguyen acknowledging that there is a problem and wanting to fix the problem, at least, you know, get something going. And I will be, you know, participating in doing that when that comes to committee or ad hoc. It was disappointing for me to hear disparaging and frankly ridiculous allegations from a fellow commissioner against another fellow commissioner and many others who feel the same way during a recent radio interview with the director of schools. The commissioner brought up the topic of explicit library books, then criticized anyone who had a problem with them. The accusation made by him was that anyone who sounds the alarm about pornographic or pedophilic books in our schools, that they must have a fetish or bend towards that type of behavior. Not those that protect this abhorrent material, but the ones that are trying to get everyone to pay attention, that they are the ones with a moral issue. What kind of an upside-down world are we living in? What kind of twisted individual thinks this way? That in and of itself is a perversion of facts. The director of schools in turn stated that a small fringe group that the likes to be loud on social media are the only ones that have a problem with these pedophilic and pornographic books. I feel a need to remind them both that the part that they're leaving out of this is that the majority of this county commission was elected by this fringe group, many by a margin of two to one. I also feel the need to remind them both that we are the representatives of the people. It's been stated that parents should have the right to determine what their children are allowed to read, and I wholeheartedly agree. This is very possible to achieve in the public library. However, parents deciding what their children are exposed to at school is always going to be retroactive to the action of a child checking a book or reading it before they bring it home. Everyone knows this. I'm tired of everyone acting like this is a valid argument. Parents don't escort their children to school. Parents don't escort their children to the school library. Parents don't review every single one of the thousands of books which are available in our school libraries. Tennessee state law gave us a way to differentiate between our school and our public libraries. They did this for this exact reason. We are allowed to treat those books differently than books in our public libraries. That legislation protects from any lawsuits against First Amendment freedom of speech laws. We have members on this commission and on the school board who pervert the term fascism and use fear of lawsuit as justification for allowing an ongoing moral decay. We have a chairman of the school board who has publicly threatened any citizen in the county that sends examples of explicit content found in his schools to his email or voicemail because he is personally offended by that language. His threat is that they will be cut off from access to the chairman if they make him feel uncomfortable with language he doesn't approve of. This is ludicrous. Leaders are called to make bold decisions. You cannot say that you disagree with explicit content personally and then vote to keep it, especially when people that create the law have given you a way to stand for what you believe without fear of legal ramifications. Don't sit up here and tell everyone your personal beliefs and then vote opposite of your beliefs. Have the boldness to stand by your beliefs. That's why you were elected. Schools are to be filled with things that the community agrees are of value, ideas that the community deems worthy of opening a child's mind to, things that we want to train our children with. We are representatives of our community. These books have zero value, in my opinion. We may disagree on that point, but I believe anyone who has any level of conviction from the Lord could agree that they do not belong in schools where we're shaping the minds of children. To anyone that feels otherwise and yet calls themselves a Christian, I'd challenge you with this. There's an Old English proverb that was first put into print in Thomas Manton's Book of Sermons in sixteen ninety-three. So they would give him glory, praise, praise him with their lips and honor him with their lives. They would make that their work and scope. This, that this may be the real language of their hearts and actions, which speak much louder than words. How about letting your actions and your votes speak for what's in your hearts? I say this to try to get a consensus on this resolution. I hope it's voted for unanimously.
Commissioner Geno?
Commissioner, Chairman Hyde, I've thought a lot about what's been going on in the schools and the children, protecting the children. As a grandparent, I'm not allowed to speak at the school board because I don't have children, personally children, in the schools. So I'm not allowed to do that, so I don't have a voice, but I do pay taxes. However, something that I overheard Mr., the director of schools say that made him have difficulty sleeping at night was the mental health of the children. And I as well, being that I deal with mental health a lot, I do concern myself with the mental health of the children, and I have often wondered why the schools have so many psychologists in the schools. All of the depression, anxiety, the things that the children are going through in the schools has escalated. Many don't realize that the growth and development of children and their ability to understand literature and what they're reading has a great impact on what happens as they get older. Many of the people that I know and that I've treated have had incidents in their childhood that caused great harm and pain for them as they got older. Children are not able to grasp, for example, in some of these books, it talks about, I won't, I don't have to tell you, you know, when, when children are very inquisitive and experimental. And so if a child gets a book and they read it and it's something has to do with sexual intercourse or has to do with, you know, things like that, fellatio, whatever you want to call it, they may ask another child to participate who doesn't understand as well. And that child participates and then becomes ridden with guilt and concern and possibly can commit suicide. We have to look at the big picture here, because mental health is a huge issue in regards to what these children are reading in these schools. And I really encourage you to reach out to the superintendent or the director of schools, because he's been the superintendent, and he's aware of what's going on in the schools. But I find that a lot of people, the attacks on the school board members that are trying to bring this to light, to the parents and to the community, to our citizens, is very concerning to me, because it's almost like, how dare you? Because you were. Because you were over here and you were a part of this, you shouldn't be able to speak about that. However, if it makes you uncomfortable to hear what is on these papers, then that means that you also have uncomfortable, an uncomfortable, I want to call it, I'm not calling you mental, but you have an issue with understanding that not everybody is ready for this kind of information to be, children can't process this, I'm sorry. An eleven-year-old and a ten-year-old cannot process the fact of having, being raped or whatever. Some people want to say, oh, this is a way to educate them about it. They are not ready for that. Many of you think the parents have the time and the understanding and knowledge of what these children are reading. They don't. I have talked to a lot of parents, and I talk to a lot of people every day, trust me, every day, and it's a lot of trauma, a lot of trauma, a lot of harm that has happened in children's lives, and many of them grow and have so many issues. And to, this resolution here to protect the children, you know, we argue over overtly over-sexualized, who's the law? Come on, people. This is common sense. I know when I was nine years old, I would never have been able to process what's in these books. I would have had no idea what to do with this information. But I can tell you that the kids today that are exposed to social media and the things that they are able to access, and you think that you put a child, a device on their phone or on their iPads or whatever you want to call it, these kids are smart. They will go around it and they will look at things and they will read things and they will practice and they will play and they will use that. But we do have an obligation to protect our children, and if we can't do it, to me, it's a bullet. You worry about putting bulletproof glass on the schools and SROs in the schools? By golly, you need to have bulletproof books because these books are like bullets because they will harm them, and they will harm them as they get older because they cannot process them. And I, I don't, I don't understand what the stink is about having the information. I know that I'm a big thing about putting references on materials. With a doctorate degree, I would give you an F because you didn't have the references there. But the important thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we have to understand that we work with the school board, we provide them their budget, but this divisiveness of people going on radio stations and condemning people because they're saying things about what is wrong? That is crazy. That's crazy to me, and I don't understand why this is happening, but we have got to stop. We have got to stop the divisiveness in this body, in the school system, whatever it is. But we will, we will not survive this because these kids are our future. You have to understand they are our future. You worry, you think about the suicides, I talked to a mental health provider today. She was here last week and we talked about suicide, and she said suicide is up. She said, what about that fourteen-year-old that committed suicide last week in Portland? What about that? What happened to him? I know a lot about it because I was told about it, but let me tell you something. If we're going to banter and bark and we're going to get at each other's throats about different things, we got a big problem. But we have got to protect these kids, and if you don't want to start looking and thinking about what is in these schools and in these libraries, whatever, you owe an obligation to the children of this, their future, to protect them and protect their mental health because that mental health is everything there is. You need to connect the dots when it comes to this kind of stuff because this is what's happening. I'm going to say one thing, that I, I am in total agreement, I would like to see a little bit more meat on the bones with this. However, I'm okay with it. I'm okay, again, I would give you an F for references, but I'm okay with leaving that. We're not banning books. We're protecting minds, we're protecting the health of these children, and that's really all I had to say because I'm, I've been so upset about this because I, as a grandparent, cannot go to the school board and tell them how I feel because I don't have my own personal children in the schools. That needs to change. Grandparents take care of kids, they take care of their babies, they take care of their grandkids, and I think that needs to change as well. I agree.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chairman Hyde. This is a resolution to protect children, and I don't know what else can be said, so I'd like to call to question.
A question has been called. Is there a second?
Point of order, sorry. Commissioner Miller can't make a comment before she calls a question.
Oh, no, I'm not accepting that unless I'm overruled. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Is there a division, is there a division in the House?
Mr. Chairman, I'll forget it. I'll call a question.
No, I actually understand. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, folks, it's, it's, you know my feeling on this, and I'm as conservative as anyone else, but we need to quit waxing eloquent and just say a big no to this kind of thing. And we can hear stuff until it's coming out our ears, but I've heard just about all that I, my little brain can handle tonight on this because I know how I'm going to vote. I knew how I was going to vote when I entered this room, and most of you did too. All right, a question has been called, and I'm going to ask if it will be put on the board by Commissioner Cho for this thing. Okay?
Point of order, I was next to you, Cho, but not.
Well... The, I'm accepting this from Commissioner Miller then. You can vote against me if you want to, but it's on the board.
What are we voting on, Mr. Chairman?
Question. There seemed to be some confusion. It seemed like the yeses had it, but we will put it on the board.
Mr. Chairman, are we voting on calling the question?
Yes.
I think there was a challenge, too.
I, I don't care about any challenge. We're, we're voting on this right now.
I'm going to go with ruling, then. Let's vote on that.
All right, we'll vote on that ruling. All right, put that on the board then. What, what are you challenging, Commissioner?
Calling the question, Mr. Miller was out of order and did, so she made a comment, and that's under rules. So you're ruling that, that she's good, I'm challenging that.
Well, I, I, and I'm here to say that if the commission votes against me, fine, but we, we will put that on the board then and go with that. All right? Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
No.
The ruling of the chair on this matter.
Is yes an affirmative for Commissioner Wynn's amendment, or is yes an affirmative on the ruling of the chair?
Yes would, I'm thinking that the yes would be for Commissioner Wynn, no would be for the chair. All right? Do you agree with that, Mr. Wynn?
It's in the red or black, so it's a green, so we got, either way, yeah.
All right.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, we'll, we have a split on that, so we're back to Ms. Miller's call of the question. If you'll put that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, the question, the call of the question, one by thirteen to eight.
Sixteen.
No, it does not require sixteen, I don't think. Mr., it requires sixteen. All right. All right, everyone, please be quiet. Commissioner Becker?
I'd like to make a, an amendment since the four, the four pages of excerpts, you know, has been included, which is fine. Page numbers are listed here. A previous commissioner said she would give us an F for reference, which I agree. So I would just like to, I don't, I'm not going to delay, I just, before it gets into the minutes, that each passage includes, I mean, it already includes page number, so let's include what, what the book is. So it's book, page, content.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Becker and second by Commissioner...
Mansfield.
Mansfield. Any discussion on this, raise your hand. All right, put that on the board.
Can I speak to this amendment?
Sure.
I'll make it quick. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. First, I want to apologize for one thing because I misunderstood Commissioner Wynn's original amendment, that's why I voted yes to it. Second, several months ago, I agree, I would have agreed with Commissioner Ring about the removing the explicit content, but after a lot of discussions with citizens and a lot of self-reflection, I understand the reason we need to remember history because so it won't repeat itself. And so I, I wanted to state all those, and my reason for that is to support this amendment because any question about whether or not this is a good resolution, I just encourage citizens to go back and read the books that are listed in here, and, and I love the fact that we're going to include, just like Commissioner Becker, the encouragement. I encourage everyone to vote yes to include the titles on the pages. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other hands on this? All right, Madam Clerk, you'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Did someone's machine fail to record your vote?
No.
All right, we have twenty-two now. Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on the main motion?
Yes.
No one else wants to speak? I wish somebody else would speak. All right, let's, let's go, Madam Clerk. Whoa, Commissioner Wynn, I didn't really mean that.
I aim to please Mr. Chairman, so I just wanted to speak. Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Twenty-two to zero. We probably could have done that, folks, thirty minutes ago. Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash fifteen rescinding resolution twenty-two oh two dash oh three approving economic impact plan for Shute Lane development area.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cho, second by Commissioner Mansfield. There's Commissioner Wynn.
One question, Mr. Chairman. Did the developer pull out of this? Is that why we're?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you, sir.
All right, all in favor, signify by a sign.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash sixteen is a resolution encouraging the resource authority to hold meetings at the administration building. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Teichner. Commissioner Teichner, did you want to speak to this?
Question.
Second.
All right, question's been called and second. Let's place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Fifteen to seven, does not go forward. Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may be a question for our finance director, but I'll direct my question to you first, sir. How much of the county funds or taxpayer dollars goes from the county to the resource authority?
Let's see, our representative, who are our representatives on that? Commissioner, okay.
So as far as how much of the county goes to the resource authority, the resource is mainly funded by the tipping fees. However, the county does pay a hundred thousand a year, just as our share. In the past, the resource authority had such an incredible loss that we would increase that every year up and down to cover it. That's no longer the case. The resource authority, I'm happy to report, has an eight million dollar surplus. We also at the county pay for our landfill maintenance. Mr. Long could speak to that. I think it's somewhere around seventy thousand a year right now.
Question's answered.
What, how much? It was a hundred thousand and what? I had a hard time hearing, I apologize.
A hundred thousand plus landfill fees each year.
Okay.
And that can vary. In the past, we had a, a large lawsuit out at Cap's Gap, was several millions of dollars the county covered.
So currently, that is essentially a for-profit entity? Is that accurate?
At the moment, they have eight million dollars in surplus.
So is that a yes or no?
It's not a for-profit, no.
Okay, let's not discuss between, direct that to me, if you will.
So is that a for-profit, Mr. Hyde, the resource authority?
It's not, but it's operated governmentally. All right, Commissioner Ring?
Thank you, sir. The resource authority is a quasi-governmental agency, seven member board, four from the two cities, Hendersonville, and three from Sumter County. They met at the resource authority for probably twenty years or more. Every meeting was there. At some point in the last ten years, it was decided to meet here in order to make it a little more convenient for county commissioners, who then had to come back here for meeting in case the meetings ran long. They typically did not. What we were doing at one point was when we, when the resource authority put in new scales, they were meeting at the resource, at the resource authority office periodically to supervise the construction of the scales. My understanding of this is that one of the reasons that they want to move there is because they're going to get ready to undertake a huge renovation and remodel and number of other construction aspects, and they want to be on site where that happens. I think that's perfectly acceptable. I don't believe it's out, I think it's, we're, we're out of our bounds requesting that they meet here. They are a quasi-governmental agency, and they can choose, the board can vote to meet wherever they choose to meet, so I, I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Okay, and I, I will make a, a matter of clarification. Okay, and I will make a matter of clarification here, just so that we understand that that is true. A board can choose to do that, except when it comes in conflict with law. And I think the general question here is, is the meeting place adequate to meet the standards of the State Controller? So that is a big question with this. Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say that the Resource Authority is created by private act. It is a, it's a quasi-governmental entity, but it is a government, nonetheless. And I know that this was brought forward by members of the Resource Authority for simple fact, for citizens' sake, not for their sake, because of, it seems that it's an intent to subvert being transparent and open, as well as an attempt to subvert the intention of the commission to record every meeting. As you know, Commissioner Motel and myself fought pretty hard for that for years. Still not a perfected process, but hopefully we're getting there. But this is really meant to circumvent the spirit of that, unfortunately, in order to do things in the shadows and not in the light for citizens. And it's been, the citizens have been fighting that pretty actively and have been treated pretty reprehensively by members of that board after meetings. And so, I do think it's important that we encourage them, and we have every right to ask, which is what this is doing. So it's shocking that somebody would not want to vote to ask them to be more transparent and make it convenient for citizens to come and actually meet and attend the meetings, since a lot of Sumner County taxpayer money goes towards this in the form of bonds and appropriations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Janong?
Chairman Hyde, I go to the, I'm on the board for the Resource Authority, and this was brought up to move it to the location of the plant by the, one of the citizen that was freshly appointed to the board, to, because of the reason they wanted to observe and see what was going on. Well, here's the thing. If, we meet at five o'clock, our board meetings are at five o'clock. I yet have seen anybody walk out there and look around and see what's going on there. I go there to dump my husband, so I know what it looks like, but I haven't seen anybody on the board go out there and wander around and look at what the plant is doing. Now, they have been offered, because they'll do it anytime, to allow the board members to review what's going on as far as the plant goes, to tour it, to see it. But the other thing that we have a problem with is meeting space. The space is small, and since we've had citizens coming, we don't have enough space. People have to sit on the floor, they have to stand up against the wall, they, it's very small. And the egress for getting out for a fire is questionable, because the room is very narrow, there's a table, there's no door at the end, there's windows. I'm not going to jump out a window into the garbage area. But if there's a fire and you get blocked, I'm not sure, fire code-wise, it's good to have the meeting in there if we have all these people, because there's some things that I noticed and some other citizens had noticed that didn't, that were a little, if the fire marshal was to come over, he might go, well, this isn't cool. So I think it's better to have it here, not because it's inconvenient for me or anybody on the board, but it is quite interesting that you're going to require, you want the citizens that live in Golletsville, Westmoreland and all, to go all the way across the county to the Resource Authority to go to the meeting. I just felt that, in the air of what was going on, that it seemed like the transparency was a little questionable. So I would like to ask them to bring, I'm going to ask them to bring it back, because when it turns dark and we get into the winter months, I don't think I'll be going out into the resource dump area and checking out the plant, because I'm not going to do that. I mean, and there's not security out there. There is no security other than a gate. So, I'm just saying. So that is kind of the story behind it. But I would encourage all of you to come to the Resource Authority meetings, so you can observe what is happening out there and see what is going on with our trash. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Janong. Commissioner Schmidt?
And this is why I objected to the call to question, because there were no questions asked, no ideas exchanged. So I could sense part of the room was a little bit aggravated, that I didn't vote to call the question. That's why I voted against it, because we're hearing some good information for these people out here to listen to, and that's all I'm going to say.
Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to Commissioner Janong, I just, I can't help but think back to just many of meetings we've had in Room 112. The description of standing room only, narrow hallways, lack of egress, problems getting in and out, but we're still meeting in Room 112. I guess my question is, is, does the owl system, is that not portable? So all the meetings are recorded. So I'm just having a hard time with the lack of transparency and the trying to hide something. I mean, I would get it if there was discouraged or the owl wasn't allowed, but these meetings are being recorded, you know? Oftentimes, Room 112 where we hold our meetings isn't big enough, and it exceeds the fire marshal rating. But yet, we still meet there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Rogers?
Call for question.
All right, questions have been called. Is there a second? Commissioner Mansfield? It doesn't matter if anybody's in the queue. No, well, we still had three people. It's gone down to one now. All right, put that on the board, please.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, questions been called. We will vote at this time. If you'll place that on the board, Madam Clerk? Mm-hmm.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
With a vote of eighteen to four, that motion passes. All right, go ahead, Ms. Chairman.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine dash one seven, approving statement of intent to move forward for purposes of allowing due diligence and reviewing the feasibility of a solar lease agreement for the roof of the Sumner County Jail. An ISO move. And I just wanted to briefly say, you know, majority of us were elected to save citizens' money. My question is, why wouldn't we want to at least explore something to gather information on something that actually could potentially save taxpayers' money? Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Sho. All right, Commissioner Janong?
Just take it off.
All right, Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow Commissioners, please indulge me here. I'm coming to you again this month to solicit your support in signing this statement of intent to move forward regarding research on the possibility of receiving roof repairs and a solar array system, all for free, with a twenty-five-year warranty. But before I get ahead of myself, I need to point out some facts. These facts are important to the commissioners, who are not as intimately involved as some are, for the concerned citizens here in the chamber, and for those who are watching live and those who will watch later. Fact number one, we have a sheriff's station in jail with about a hundred and ten thousand square feet of roof, which is about two and a half acres, that is leaking badly and has been since before this commission was sworn in over a year ago. Fact number two, the estimate from the consultants the mayor brought in to assess the work that needs to be done will most likely be over two million dollars, including their consulting fee. Fact number three, currently, the commission has set aside one point four seven five million dollars to do the work, which will leave the county over one-half million dollars short of our budget. Fact number four, in researching options on roof repair, the General Operations Committee was introduced to a company that could possibly bring investors in to repair the roof and build a solar array system for no cost to the county. This could be done using the thirty percent rebate, which is built into the Inflation Reduction Act, depreciation and other methods available to the investor. The purpose of this document we are voting on tonight is to let the investor know, we are serious enough about the prospect to take the next step in researching whether this is a good fit for them and a good fit for us. Our attorneys have rewritten the document to ensure it is totally non-binding. If we, as the county, decide it does not work for us, we simply walk away from the table and repair the roof as we see fit. However, if it does work for us, it is possible that we save not only the roughly two million dollars, but we won't have the responsibility of maintaining roof or the solar system. The investor will be responsible for both for twenty-five years. Some have concerns that this is too good to be true. We have seen many things like that over time. The Bearcat vehicle was too good to be true. The Paycheck Protection Program, when COVID hit, was too good to be true. The thirty-seven million dollars in ARPA funds that we, as a county, received was too good to be true, and so is the twenty million dollar grant for the water line that might run up thirty-one E to Westmoreland and Portland. The Inflation Reduction Act is brought to us by the same government that brought us all of those other programs. In the final analysis, the people who pay for it is us. If we can save ourselves two million dollars, I think we should take a hard look at it. I've heard many other concerns, from receiving solar panels from China, to the investors not being from the United States. This is precisely the reason we should sign this document. Currently, we don't know what we don't know about the deal. Signing this document will give us the ability to learn what we don't know and answer a whole bunch of other questions. As for letting, as for getting into a bad deal, we've got some really smart people in our Financial Directors Department and our Law Directors Departments. They're not going to let us get into any trouble. We will do what's best for us, or we simply won't do it. I know we're trying to get the roof done quickly. When the committee was addressed by the representative, we were told the study could be done in a week, and the roof repairs could be started within thirty days. That is possibly quicker than we can bid the roof out and get started on it with the current way we contract in the county. My entire life, I've never known of anything that was so scary that we couldn't talk about it. A yes vote for this motion will allow us to do just that. A no vote means we'll never find out what could have happened with this building or other county properties. We have a chance now to save a lot of money for the taxpayers of Sumner County. We have an opportunity to use an alternative energy, thereby doing something good for the environment. At this juncture, there's only upside for us. Please vote yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
So I wanted to get in on this, because I had spoken to Commissioner Klein and a couple of citizens after the last commission meeting. Initially, a lot of citizens came to me with the concerns as outlined by Commissioner Klein, why they were skeptics of it. Couple of citizens, like I said, after the last meeting, came to me and asked me to reconsider. Talked to other citizens between now, you know, between today and back then. So I am, just want to avoid any confusion, I am going to vote in favor for Commissioner Klein's thing here tonight. Let's see what's in it, let's see the details. At the same time, I understand that maybe, if I understand the mayor correctly, he may have something that maybe he would want to bring forward at some point with his idea. So in the spirit of, you know, reviewing everything, this plan here and any plan that maybe Mayor Isbell, I'll let him speak to that if he wants to, but any plan that he may want to bring forth, I'd love to hear both options and see which would be more beneficial.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Klein answered part of my question. The roof, has it been adequately fixed, or has anything been done to keep the water from flowing in while we get a feasibility study? It seems like I saw something in the email on that, just want to get confirmation on that, that it's not leaking really bad like it was. Can I ask Commissioner Klein that?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Sullivan, I think there are still leaks. Probably the mayor could answer that question better than me. There have been remedial repairs made. It's not totally stopped at this point, though, especially on the jail tower.
And one other question. You mentioned, how long will it, you feel like, if we can do something, if we do due diligence on this, where we can get a bid back fairly quickly, within thirty days?
The representative told us at, I believe it was the Legislative Committee meeting, I'm not totally sure if it was then, that they can have all their due diligence done in a week. And the roofer who would do the work for them happened to be there that night, and he said he can be ready to go within thirty days.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I still don't know who the investor is. Can we get clarification on who the, who this investor?
Could you respond to that, Commissioner?
Commissioner Wynn, that's why we need to sign the letter of intent, so we can find out all of these things. That's all a part of it. They will commit to who, and, I wanted to remind you that the ball's in our court. If we don't like who the investor is, we can ask them to change, or we can walk away. If we don't like where the solar panels come from, we can ask them to change or walk away.
Yeah, and also too, and I'll address Commissioner Klein directly, if that's okay, Chairman Hyde?
Go ahead.
It was my understanding, too, that by signing this LOI, we are giving this unknown entity the access to our county data, essentially our electrical usage data, where they're going to start to speak and almost negotiate on our behalf, and we don't even know who this entity is. I mean, I have a fundamental issue, just, I just don't think it's a good business practice to just, hey, this sounds great. I'll, hats off, man, it sounds great, you know? But if you can't be upfront with some minor detail, like who we're doing business with, I'm sorry, I can't support it. I just, I wouldn't do it personally, just to, hey, yeah, you're going to give me a bunch of money and something for free, and I just have to give you my information. I need to know more, and I think that our taxpayers need to know more about who we are engaging with before we engage and before we make commitments to give over information and authorization to do work on our behalf.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stayed after and spoke with Melanie, the lady that presented in quite lengthy, and I also called her on the phone a few different times, asking some of the questions that a lot of people had, because I was skeptical as well, and I wanted to find out how they were making money off of us, because if I could wrap my head around that, then I may be okay with understanding, you know, and voting on allowing them to see our information. It was my understanding from her that this letter of intent allows them to basically see the figures that they're working with, to be able to present to us a package of what it would, what our savings would be. And it also is for them to see whether it's doable for them. So what I gathered was, the solar panels would be taking twenty-five percent of the electrical usage of that jail off of what the typical grid was from Gallatin Electric. And that money is the money that we would be paying to them at a guaranteed lower price than what we would pay to the regular power grid. So that's where our savings would be, that plus the free roof. When I asked them why they would be interested in doing a free roof, I couldn't get my head around that either. They just sound too good to be true. And the answer I got was that most buildings that do this are businesses and schools that are open eight, ten, twelve hours a day or whatever. That jail is That jail is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and uses a massive amount of power. They're going to collect 25, is it 25 years' worth of, um, utility fees for 25% of our bill. That's where their investment is. Now, when it comes to an investment group and what they're going to use to make their money, I really don't care what their equipment is or where it came from, that's their business model to make money off of us. They own that equipment. I don't ask Amazon what brand trucks they drive when they bring their packages to my house, I just order from Amazon. Things like that are, yes, of interest, where the solar panels made, you know, maybe of interest, but they're going to buy them from somebody. And then also to David's point, that this is going to be paid for by our taxpayers, by my constituents, whether we take advantage of it or not. They're going to pay for somebody else to put solar panels on their roofs, because this is part of an act that has passed. The Inflation Reduction Act has already passed. It's, it's going to be taken advantage of by other communities. Why should we not explore what it could do for us possibly? If it comes with federal strings attached, I'll be the first one to shred it to pieces. I just want to see what it is. If, if it's saving, you know, a half a penny, it ain't worth it. But if it, if it can do some good things and give us a free roof, I'm all for it. Let's just vote and see.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to bring a few points out on this, uh, talk about the damage that's on the roof right now. Uh, the March 3rd event, the wind event that we had in Sumner County caused significant damage to that roof. We put a Band-Aid on that, thinking that we would be able to move expeditiously on this project and get the roof fixed. We worked towards that with the mindset of saving money. That fix was supposed to last about two months. Thought that would be ample time to get this through. That would have been May. Fortunately, it's still holding up. How long it holds up, I don't know. We have had recent damage to duck work from a leak that has cost in excess of $2,000. We continue to have leaks in the building at, at various times that, that we put another Band-Aid on each time while we go through these motions. There are significant issues with this roof, uh, you know, and, and the fundamental issue that I have with this is the fact that we are giving ownership of the roof to our county jail to an outside entity, foreign or domestic, does not matter. We're giving ownership of that roof. They are owning that roof. They are owning the solar panels that are on top of that roof for a jail in Sumner County. I can't imagine the liability that can come from that. I don't know, but I can't imagine that there would not be liability attached with ownership of a roof by an outside entity on the jail in Sumner County. Beyond that, we have issues with the bid process. I know Commissioner Klein has his preferred roofing company that's ready to do the project. The problem with that is, we need to bid it out. The state law mandates that. These are issues that we have to work through. Now, I have no problem working through those issues. However, are we still going to continue with putting a roof on? We just, with the attorney's help, just worked out all of the details on the architect's contract. We will be executing that real soon, let them get started on their process, and then put it out to bid. Is all that on hold while we look at this project one more time and try to get the answers that we haven't been able to get over the past few months? We, at some point, we have to make a decision to put a roof on this jail. We cannot continue to kick this can down the road and look at other opportunities. Now, I will add that I do have the architect looking at putting solar panels ourself on there, captioning the credits ourself, captioning the energy ourselves, and looking at how much that will cost the taxpayers of Sumner County. So that is an option that we're working on as we move forward with this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'll for the question.
Question has been called, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jones, was it? Oh, Brown, Commissioner Brown, all right. All in favor, signify with a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like saying?
No.
Place that on the board.
Thank you.
Each commissioner records their vote.
All right, that motion fails, and we will go to Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first off, I apologize, I was going to call the question, but, uh, this discussion had me, I mean, I just have a question now, and I, I'll direct it to you, Mr. Chairman, but we voted to appropriate funds with zero strings to fix the jail roof. So I, I don't, I'm just, I, one, my understanding is that this, that these two things are entirely independent, that the ex, you know, the, the, the option to explore this is totally independent of fixing, of those funds which we, which we have already appropriated to fix the roof, so that's one. And please, somebody correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong there. The second one would be a question to maybe our finance director or the county mayor. I, I think we started touching on it, but what, what exactly is the problem? Like, we've appropriated the funds, we should be good to go to fix the roof.
Who can best clarify that for us?
Right now, I understand the money was appropriated for the roof, we're getting ready to get the architect. The reason we ran into issues with Roof Connect is they wanted to use an out-of-state purchasing cooperative. We cannot use out-of-state purchasing cooperatives for that purpose. That's my opinion, that's Eric's opinion, that's County Technical Assistance's opinion, that's the State Comptroller's Office's opinion. They've gave findings and other issues. The other issue you've got with this, and a couple of things to go through, was number one, if we did combine the roof and the solar, in addition to having the State Comptroller's approval on this lease, we're actually going to have to bid the lease. If it is a purely lease for solar, then it does not have to be bid, is, is the other thing you run into as far, as far as that goes. So right now, what you're looking, if you're looking at a solar panel only, this is not a bidable project, but the lease itself requires approval from the State Comptroller's Office, and the State Comptroller's Office has to determine that it is in the county commission's best interest before they can even contemplate approving it. Did I answer all your questions?
Yes, but I think the county mayor wanted to expand on that.
It is, and I'm, and I'm going to offer an amendment with that, with that understanding, very short amendment to this. But since I'm in queue, I'd like to go ahead and offer this amendment. I would just like to add a, be it further resolved at the end, be it further resolved that nothing in this resolution shall slow or impede existing progress to replace the jail roof in a conventional manner.
Second by Commissioner, was it Harris, Mr. Harris? Schmidt, does everyone understand that motion? Do you want it repeated? Everyone understand? All right. Anyone in the queue now speaking to this, or raise your hand? All right, seeing no one, I'll ask the clerk to place that on the board, that amendment.
Each commissioner records their vote.
See unanimous vote to that. We're back to the main motion, Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to answer a few questions, as I understand them. Initially, Commissioner Nguyen wanted to know who we would be dealing with for the study we're dealing with Roof Connect out of Ohio. Okay, so that's, the, the investor is an after part of it. They, if, if we agreed to go ahead with it, they would, they would find the investor. They've got a few now that are interested in doing it, and we would go from there. As far as bid issues, uh, we currently are not at bid with that. I don't see why we can't pursue both concurrently. I, I'll just say that. If, if we sign the letter of intent tomorrow and they have answers for us in a week, that'll be before we actually go through the entire bid process. We would know more from that. As far as strings being attached, that Commissioner Jones talked about, as I understand it, and, and our finance director alluded to, the, the issue is a lease. We are insulated from any government strings attached because we don't own the roof. They would. They own the material, they own the solar system. Him talking about the, the solar panels only being leased is news to me, so I, I can't speak directly to that. I'm pleased that the mayor is talking about looking at the solar system. I don't care who does the solar system, and I'm not a big fan of solar systems, but I see it as one of those things of the future, that our grid is in big trouble. The, the benefit of using Roof Connect for this is that in order for them to put a solar system on a roof, they want to make sure the roof is sound. That's why they do the roof. It's not, they don't want the roofing work, they just want to make sure that their 25-year guarantee will be on a sound foundation, and that is the EPDM roof and repairs that they're talking about. So there are some questions here. Again, I would say the issue tonight is signing the letter of intent. It's completely non-binding, according to, to our, our legal man here. And if we can pull out at any time, I don't see why we can't pursue it concurrently, and I would encourage the commission to pursue both at the same time.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to quickly address, deviate a little bit, I, I read the statutes that were sent from our finance director after speaking with this representative that Mr. came in and spoke to General Ops. And my understanding was that this was not a purchase, a cooperative purchase, lease purchasing or lease financing, which are all terms used in our state statutes, and that the proposal being proposed here did not fall under those. That's why it's just such a unique and kind of a, it's just a weird situation. But after reading those statutes that were sent from our finance department, I couldn't find, and based, talking to them, I mean, something might change with, with what he was talking about with the vendor for the conventional roof, but I did not see where it was a purchase, cooperative purchase, lease purchase, or lease financing, and I just wanted to clarify that, as far as this statement of letter of intent and what they're doing is, is proposing.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was there at the meeting for General Ops whenever the, the solar folks came. I actually got the, the presentation in my, my folder here. And yes, Roof Connect is a company that will be doing the roof, but the investor is who, this unknown investor is who we will turn over our information to, for them to analyze. And I, again, it's just, I don't feel like it is a good business practice to be turning over information to an unknown entity, an unknown party. Once that's named, I, I think that maybe a little different story, have a little more comfort level there. But without that information, I just do not feel that this is, this, this is a good idea to move forward. We need to know who we are working with. We need to know who it is we're giving information to. When, when you look at the payback on these things, right now, if you just look at the rough numbers, on average, we pay about 17 cents a kilowatt hour. At that rate, at the amount of power we use today, I think it was like 28-plus years for a payback, just on the roof cost. You know, so I, I, I don't see how the model works for them, just by doing just basic back-of-the-napkin math. Maybe they've got a different formula that they're going to use, some, some, some more creative and fancy math than, than what common sense and logical will lead you to. But without knowing who it is, again, I just don't, I do not think it's a good idea for us just to, you know, there's a shiny object, it's pretty, let's go for it, and we don't know exactly who it is that we're dealing with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Let me see if I understand Mr. Klein, Commissioner Klein, uh, did they say, or have they said, that they are going to conduct a structural engineer evaluation on the roof? Right? So at this point, we don't even know if it'll hold up the, okay, that's my question.
Mr. Mayor?
Take along this conversation any further, but something come to mind, as we pursue, if, if this body decides to pursue this statement of intent, uh, who will be in charge of this process? Will we have a definitive timeframe on this process? And are there specific questions that need to be answered for us to go forward? It seems to me that I'm being directed to do this, and I have no questions to ask. We, we need to figure this part of it out. We need to know how long we're going to prolong this process before we come to a decision of yes or no, because we've gone no a couple of times, we've gone yes a couple of times. Let's figure it out.
Commissioner Klein?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would be happy to take responsibility and ask the questions. I feel confident that our law director and our finance director work well with me, and we could get through any of this. I think a deadline is appropriate, because if, if we damage or get sued for anything in that jail, that's a big mistake. Here again, we're just talking about signing a letter of intent that is totally non-binding, seeing if this makes sense for us, and the possibility of saving $2 million in expense. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I firmly believe that this is worth pursuing in some way, shape, or form. The first link to that is signing the letter of intent. And once again, I would ask a yea vote on this.
Commissioner Jones?
Call the question.
Uh, do you still want to call the question? We have one other person in the queue. All right. Questions being called, is there a second? All right, second by Commissioner Schmidt, was it? Sho, all right. All those in favor signify with a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, I think the ayes definitely have it without a vote. All right, I'll ask that, since we have no one else in the request queue at this time, that we put the item on the board for a vote. The vote is 19 to 3, and that does pass. All right, let's take 10 minutes. All right, we're going to move forward. Budget Committee, Commissioner Shoef?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we have people still coming here, but you called us to order. So, item number one, 2309-18, is appropriating carryover funds of $563,822 from 2022, 2023 to this fiscal year for the sheriff's office vehicles. This is due to an invalid bid, carryover funds, no new funds. I so move.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Item number 2309-19, again, appropriating carryover funds $323,000 from 2022, 2023 to this year for highway equipment. Again, no new funds, this is all carryover.
Okay. Motion and a second by Commissioner Harris. No one's in the queue, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Item number 2309-20, appropriating and correcting carryover from last year to this year for courthouse, parking garage, jail pods, to include a reduction of $259,795 of a previous carryover, and increases of $166,323. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Shoef, second by Commissioner Becker, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Item number 2309-21, appropriating carryover $87,414 from 2022, 2023 to this year. This is for an EMA Homeland Security Grant. No new county funds here as well.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Schmidt, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
Item number 2309-22, approving a reduction of a THSO grant for Drug Court to agree with appropriation of grant agreement. I so move.
Who is the second over here? Commissioner Becker, second set, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
2309-23 is an adjustment of a Health Department, DGA grant budget to agree with the appropriation of that grant agreement. I so move.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. And folks, I am looking to see that no one's in the queue. I'm not trying to cut anybody off. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
So, item number 2309-24, this is removing $171,274 that was allocated for a jury trial from Circuit, Circuit Court.
All right. Motion and a second by Commissioner Mansfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
2309-25 is approving a reduction of the ARPA Act water lines original budget to agree with available funds. I so move.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Mansfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, say aye.
So, this next one, it may take a little bit longer, so I'm going to speak to it real quick. The, the, my, my motion is to appropriate $345,000 from a grant for S, five new SROs.
Motion by Commissioner Shoef and a second by Commissioner Mansfield.
And I'm going to just speak to this really quickly, because I know some folks are going to get in queue on it. And I just want to address just the process here. And I know somebody might call me out of order for not, for speaking a little bit broadly, but there was a lot of rhetoric around this, this discussion, and I just want to lead with a couple items on what, for whatever comes of this discussion. The first is that I don't blame any organization for doing the best that they can for their employees, none whatsoever. What I do want to talk about briefly is, and this is probably going to get me in trouble, but that's okay. I want to talk about rhetoric and keeping this conversation grounded and rational, because sometimes when the rhetoric gets heated and over the top, it keeps us away from that. So, we use the term hero all the time. I served two decades in the military, and what I'm going to say here is going to make some people upset, but putting on a uniform does not make you a hero. I don't have any doubt that everybody who wears a uniform or has worn a uniform in this building has the potential and would act in order to be a hero if the time calls, like the folks in Covenant. But I want to speak to tonight to two individuals, two individuals I knew and I served with. One is Lieutenant Ben Britt, who stepped across a bridge and died, and is opposed to sending a couple privates across that bridge to check to scout varieties, and he died for it. That is a hero. Served in uniform, that's a hero. I want to talk about PFC Stephen Green, who committed war crimes against a family in Iraq. War uniform, not a hero. All of us here who have worn or wear a uniform, we are just humans. We are not a special class of citizens. We are just people with flaws who can rise to the occasion and who can also fall greatly, greatly short. And as I speak to that, I also want to speak to just the ordinary person who never gets called a hero, Taylor Curtis. Nobody in here knows who he is. He's a good dude, runs a tuning company here in Sumner County. Great guy, provides for his family, provides a service. He's just as much of a hero as all the rest of us. Jason Matherley, runs a jujitsu gym, a lot of, lot of officers and military train there. Great dude. I would, that guy does a lot for his community. You know, he, he, he is, he sits on equal par for the rest of us. So, I'm saying all of that just to try to keep this conversation grounded. Our, our personnel, all, anybody who wears a uniform deserves respect and admiration, but not special treatment. No more than anybody else. We're all the same. We are all citizens, some of whom are called from time to time to serve and who we greatly respect and appreciate. And that's, that's my comment there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, please, Mr. Shoef, Commissioner Shoef, for clarification to, to the commission, would you please explain what the commission, what the committee decided to do as far as appointing a committee and so forth?
Yes.
So that no one thinks that any of this is a dead issue.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we, we moved to appropriate this $345,000 immediately for five new Florida SROs, which everybody agreed, let's do that right now. We also moved to assign Ms. Terry Boyt, along with some other individuals, to an ad hoc committee, to immediately begin the process of digging into a appropriation of potentially more funds for salary increase, but to do so in a, in a very diligent way. So, that's what we decided to do. We expect that there will be some movement on it very soon. I, I believe that, that, that those efforts are already, that those efforts are already underway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think that'll help. Commissioner, when?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a reoccurring state grant, correct?
Yes.
And the total amount was somewhere, what, 3.6 million?
Mr. Chairman, do you have a figure on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, the, the figure is approximately correct, and I think the question will be around whether it's recurring or not. And so, there's a little bit of nuance here. If you look at the line item on the state budget, it is listed under the recurring column. However, it is voted on year over year. So, from a technical point of view, it could be stripped in any given year. My, if you, if you listened in on the committee meetings, I think Mr. Mansfield noted this, so did I, we think it is very unlikely for these funds to not be recurring. And so, in that, in that vein, you know, I think it's, the risk of them falling off is low, but were they to do that, this action would, would increase, or any other action with these, would increase maintenance of effort on a recurring basis, which, you know, could potentially lead to a tax increase, and we just wanted to be open and transparent about that. Although, I, I would argue, I think there's a very slim chance. I've spoken with our state reps on it.
Commissioner, when?
Thank you, Commissioner Shoef. Yeah, and I too have spoken with the state reps and was reassured that these are...
What, has the committee, the subcommittee, have they met yet? Have we taken any action?
I don't believe they have met yet. I'm not sure if the sheriff has appointed his representatives, but I'm not sure that they have met yet.
Okay. You know, I've spoken to Sheriff Weatherford over the past couple weeks regarding this, this topic. I've also heard from a lot of deputies about just, just the pay disparity in our sheriff's department. So, right now, our deputies make, it's about $12,000 to $13,000 less per year. Uh, so right now, our deputies make, it's about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars less per year, uh, than deputies in other agencies in close proximity to Sumner County. Uh, most, the closest one, I believe, is Robertson County. Uh, you know, even speaking with, with the, the sheriff today, you know, th- there is a large number of deputies that have openly admitted they have applied for positions, uh, with, with different counties, uh, because of the different pay rate. Uh, and that, to me, is alarming. We're already short, uh, with our deputies. Uh, and, you know, this is not helping. So when you look at that, that, that twelve to thirteen thousand dollar pay disparity, I mean, we're talking a thousand dollars per month. So we're, we're not talking about, you know, a nickel an hour, something that's like, oh, I can afford to take my family out to eat once a month. You know, that potentially can be life-changing and an impactful increase in pay. You know, so there is quite a bit of incentive to, uh, to jump ship and go elsewhere. So I don't think it's a secret, or at least it shouldn't be a secret, that our pay study that was performed back, I believe it was twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, uh, it did reveal that the sheriff's department is not the only department in this county that has disparity in pay. Uh, a, a lot, if not most or all of our departments are below what would be considered a market, and this was even before, uh, the, the ramp up in pay increase that we saw over the past year, year and a half, uh, just due to, uh, just the overall competitiveness in the market. So we've got, we've got a problem. We've got a huge problem here. Uh, but we've also too, w- we've got an opportunity, uh, to fix this problem with our sheriff's department, with our sheriff's deputies. And, and the, the good part about this is that it's at no additional cost to the county. Now, I know I've had some lots of conversations, or several conversations with, with Mr. Shoef, and I'll be the first to say that, you know, I am not for using one-time funds for recurring expenses. I think that's reckless budgeting. Uh, but with what I've gotten back and the feedback I've gotten back from our state reps, uh, that this is reoccurring and will be reoccurring, I, I feel good about moving forward and fixing this issue because right now, we're bleeding out in, in our, our sheriff's department. Uh, it, it's starting to, to leach out into other departments to where, uh, we're slowly but surely just attrition is happening, and our manpower is whittling away. And you wanna talk about decline in services. I, I don't think that anybody wants to have a decline in services in law enforcement, you know, uh, in, in, in any of our emergency services, period. Uh, you know, not, not to mention any of the other services, uh, that we have, like our roads and whatnot. You know, we, we don't wanna have a decline in services. So I think that we've got a great opportunity, uh, here before us, and, you know, I just wanna note that, that we're losing good people to other agencies, and we need to fix this. Uh, and it's not next month, next budget cycle. We need to fix this. So, and speaking with Sheriff Weatherford, uh, I, I asked Sonny, I was like, Sonny, what, what would you wanna do? What do you see needs to happen in, in your department with this money? You know, what is it that, that, that we can do as a commission to help stop this problem, help fix this problem? And the answer I received was that, hey, we just need to spread the rest of these funds across all the remaining sheriff's department employees, uh, and, and let's fix the pay issue. So, Mr. Chairman, I wanna make that motion. Uh, I, I want to amend this appropriation that the remainder of the Homeland Security and the SRO funds be allocated to the remainder of the sheriff's office employees, equally, uh, distributed as specified by our sheriff.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Nguyen and a second by, uh, Commissioner Ring. Uh, anyone wanna speak to this amendment? Would you raise your hand? Commissioner Schmidt?
Let me say I like the spirit of where you're going with it. My concern is, is the subcommittee, I don't know if they've even met yet. So my concern is, is, you know, after speaking with some deputies myself, is that we are, you know, allocating the money. If someone's been here, I'm just using examples. If we got a deputy who's been here like twenty years, and we got a guy that's only been here two, I just wanna see, are those funds that we're gonna allocate, are we gonna give the twenty-year veteran a higher piece of the pie? And then, not discounting the two-year veteran, but I just wanna see loyalty rewarded for our employees that have put their lives on the line for many, many years. Uh, so I would like to see that. I'm curious to see what the subcommittee comes up with as far as that. Um, words like benchmarking, COLA increases from some of the deputies, and they have every right to speak their minds with this. They feel that maybe they should get a bigger piece of the COLA raises, and kinda brought that up in the budget during our fiscal year thing, and I didn't mean to pick on Mr. Sitler, but it was one example. I just didn't feel like any employee that was just here for, say, six months, under a year, got the same percentage as, say, deputies, say, fifteen, twenty years. So I would kinda like to see if we're gonna go that direction, that we kinda make sure we take care of the guys up top that have, you know, been here the longest. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as I spoke about in budget and mentioned this, um, and I was speaking with, uh, Deputy Clark out, out in the hallway, it's, I mean, to me, it's, it definitely is more common sense and a little bit of a no-brainer for answering the question that Chief Deputy Craddock answered. It's like, if you could, you want all new SROs in the schools, or would you rather take all this money and put it towards deputy pay? So you'll take the money for, for pay increases, and I agree with that sentiment. I had made the motion to, I'd asked the question and felt like we needed four or five SROs as immediate need in our schools. I didn't feel like we needed thirteen or one for everyone. I did, I have been hearing over the past year or so just that the floater needing, you know, so I, I think it's a smart move that we're doing this. That's why I suggested it for just a practical need of the five SROs to fill in the gap. I, I did allude to the fact that, hey, this is a little scary for citizens, uh, as mentioned tonight by citizens, that this is a recurring item in the budget. And I have the budget sheet from, you know, the state. It's in that column, one-hundred-and-forty million dollars. I did say, as we've all talked to Lambeth and Garrett, and said if, if something else happened contrary to this, that we would string them up by their toes here in the chambers, I believe, and I believe everybody would be amenable to that, and they said, we do, you know, it's like, you put it on us. So I'm putting this on their shoulders. It's a lot of trust and faith in our representatives. But I, as I alluded to in budget, I think it'd be the probability of this money, this one-hundred-and-forty million dollars being pulled back, um, is, is extremely low. Um, I think it'd be political suicide if, no matter if it's a demet- democratically-controlled state legislature or Republican one. But I, I did have concerns about, I, I, we voted to have Commissioner Boyt along with the Finance Director, and I would like to hear from the Finance Director in a second, uh, as far as like where they are in the process, because I think they're further along than what's being alluded to on this. But it's like, just, we're gonna come back to this next month of like, what's the options of? Is, is it a one-time bonus this, this, this year? I don't know for, for everybody. Is it, you know, do we wait to the budget cycle to make it permanent? Let's just feel it out, or is this, do we come back in, you know, October, November, and like, okay, we're gonna do it all right now? I don't know what that is or what the, what, there's a scale, as Commissioner Schmidt was alluding to, but, you know, I feel like there's a, there should be a little bit of a scale to this, in my opinion, and I don't know what that should be. That's one thing I think has been worked on with the Finance Director and, uh, Commissioner Boyt, and I think Deputy Craddock. It's like, what is, what would that look like on a, instead of just like, just gotta do it now, you know? It, it, it's more of, let's wait for a month, come back and like, let's do this right and scalable. Um, and that's, I, I, I'm not gonna vote for this amendment tonight, only because of what we did in budget and went through this process and voted for this in budget. I think it's the better path, um, into actually bringing more parity to the different deputies and the different levels of services, uh, Commissioner was alluding to earlier. Um, but I, I am in favor of it's common sense that these funds go to this cause. Um, and, you know, it's brought up that there is disparity in county employees' pay, and that's been going on for about eight years now or more, and that's one thing that we have acknowledged. Uh, there has been an imbalance in the, the shift of focus on pay to one segment of employees versus balancing it on others, and, and I, I believe our goal and my goal, I know, is like, how can we bring all county employees back into parity where it's been out of balance? And what can we do in, over the next couple of years in increasing pay that has been, I feel neglected. A lot of citizens feel neglected, employees feel neglected. But as far as just, hey, we're just gonna just shoot all this money tonight and just disperse it evenly, I, I'm, I'm not for that, because that's not what we discussed in budget, and I think we did come up with a good plan, at least for a month. Um, but I, I'm, I'm totally for giving all this money to the sheriff's department, um, to increase the salaries. And, you know, Robertson County, everybody keeps mentioning Robertson County, and I'm just gonna say Robertson County raised property taxes in order to do what they did. Um, I'm not voting to raise property taxes. Um, and so this is another way that is a unique opportunity we've been given to bring things into parity. So just wanted to make that known, clarify that. Um, I, I am definitely in support of what we're gonna do. I'm just not in support of the amendment that was made tonight. Only, and so if, if we could have the Finance Director, if that's okay.
That, that will be fine if he can add to, uh, what we need to hear.
Since the Budget Committee appointed the committee last Monday, me, Deputy Craddock and Ms. Boyt have been emailing, phone calling, and going back and forth to formulate the data we're going to request from the other entities and what entities. Um, the plans are in the morning sometime fairly early, we're gonna send out the requests to the individual entities, start working on the county data, as far as sorting it by your type of employees, number of years of service and their pay. And then when we get back the information from the other entities with, um, Eric said he's gonna help get that information too, I believe he's in here, but, um, then we'll put that data together, and me, him and Ms. Boyd will meet and, um, try to determine what to do with the data unless, um, Commissioner Boyt has something different or Mr., or Mr. Craddock. But that's where we're at right now, getting ready to send the, the data out in the morning.
Thank you. Now, I wanna see the hands of those that are speaking to the amendment, not the main motion. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Commissioner Nguyen got in the, in the queue before I did. However, uh, this is concerning. Uh, the reason why it's concerning is we've heard the sheriff say that there's nine applications that sit on the desk of the sheriff in Robertson County or other agencies around us. That's just what we know. Um, these agencies are, are hiring. I mean, they're, they're like everywhere else across the country. If they can get qualified people, they're, they're gonna take them. Um, that's what we have here in Sumner County. I'm glad to say we have qualified people. Uh, I know personally some deputies that has been to Robertson County and turned down offers, uh, because they didn't wanna lose seniority to go to, to Robertson County. My main concern is, though, if we lose nine that we know of in the next three weeks, that's a whole shift of patrol in Sumner County. Who do we call on to make those calls in the miles and miles and miles of Sumner County that's not covered by municipality? That's gonna be the city of Gallatin, that's gonna be the city of Westmoreland, it's gonna be the city of Portland, Gilletsville, White House, that barely have the coverage to cover their own municipalities within theirself. What does that do to response time for crime victims? What does that do for people who needs help? What does that do for silent panic alarms? What does that do for distress? Take the other side of it, the correctional officers. TCI comes in, does a jail inspection. Our ratio is not where it's supposed to be. They shut our jail down. We have to pay for other counties to house our inmates. Hundred-and-twenty-five a day times three-hundred, you do the math. We'll have to do a tax increase by November. I don't say that to say Chicken Little, the sky's fallen. That's just reality of, of where we're at. We've known that this department, among others, has been neglected over the few years, few years, uh, just as we've said in Health and Emergency Services. Uh, we need to look at salaries, we need to look at salaries. They ask us to look at the salaries, um, and budget time. It was cut. Here we are. Some say, well, why didn't the sheriff do it again in August? He just got the money. It was just appropriated from the state. I applaud the sheriff for at least coming to us and saying, hey, can I do this with the money? I know, statutorily, he probably has to. However, um, for transparency's sake, I think he's done a job well done by coming and saying, hey, this is what I wanna do with my guys, uh, and take care of the whole department all the way across. I tread, I, I, I would encourage us to tread very lightly, um, by not approving this money to be spread out tonight, because we can use the committee to go forward for next year to make sure we're solid in our step raises. We can use the committee's work to make sure that we're solid in our salary studies when we come around to next year's budget cycle. So I will be supporting this amendment tonight, asking for that money to be distributed among the whole sheriff's office.
Amendment only. May I see your hand? Commissioner Becker?
Appreciate it. So the, the total, the total grant is, what, three-point-six million? And so I guess this three-fifty-four would be set aside, or three-forty-five for, for five new ones. So that's basically, we're talking about, if, if it's a question. So the three, so three-point-three, roughly, three-point-three million divi- like evenly spread out amongst, like what are we, is this motion to take that three-point-three, whatever it is, say, three-point-three million? Like, I'm not sure I understand how that would be distributed. I- i- is it evenly amongst all the employees?
I will allow, uh, the commissioner to clarify.
So in conversations with, uh, with Sheriff Weatherford, uh, that was the indication that evenly across the employees, um, you know, ultimately, I believe the sheriff controls his budget. So why would we be setting pay rates for our deputies? I mean, the man's elected to run the sheriff's department. Why are we not letting him run the sheriff's department? Let's give him the money, you know? He sees a problem, he's got a plan to fix it, it's his to run.
Okay. So the, appreciate that information. I don't, I'm not disagreeing. I just wanna understand what I'm, what I'm asking be, you know, to consider here. The, I, I, I believe the state's number was one-hundred-and-forty-one million? Is that right? Something like that? Hundred-and-forty million. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you know, do we have any indication? I haven't, I have not spoke with, uh, Mr. Lambeth or, or Mr. Garrett, but if, the one-forty million, while it might be, you know, continued, I don't know what the formula for Sumner County to receive three-point-six of the one-forty. And so I, I have some concern, un- unless, Mr. Chairman, someone has answers that-
I don't think they do it.
That the three-point-six might be considered safe to, to use. Is, is that, understand what I'm asking at least?
Yes.
Did, did, Mr. Chairman, do you know, may you ask?
Yes.
See if anyone has any-
It's based upon each school that we have, and whenever they stand up, the two schools that we have under construction right now, White House, Liberty Creek, we're gonna get an addition on, on top of that too.
Okay, so, so the, so if I understand you right, the three-point-six should be a minimum. The three-point-six million should be a minimum annual. Is that, is that a fair assessment? Okay. That's all for this amendment. I, I, I've, I've got another amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyt?
So I, I appreciate your faith in me and looking at the numbers, and I have been looking at the numbers. I've been looking at the numbers, and as far as like an overall, just everyone the same amount, that would be totally inadequate, inadequate to the people. Some people in our system deserve a higher raise. Some people have been underpaid for quite a while. We do need to look at it. We, we ask for another cycle. Hopefully by budget next month, we'll come back and we'll have some numbers. Deputy Craddock, Mr. Long and I, we're looking at the numbers. We're working diligently. I ask you to give it time to work through. We'll have some numbers shortly. Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Teichner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I love our law enforcement. I believe that I speak that for everyone. But I, I wanna tell you a quick thing. Um, according to the committee, Budget Committee, it seems like everything's already moving in the direction that is being suggested that we go. So that's one thing. So it looks like that there's already gonna be an immediate amount of money set aside for floaters, for the SRO, uh, you know, uh, helping that immediate need, and then working with the sheriff's department to try to figure out how to get that money to them as quickly as possible and as feasible. But, you know, the number one purchase, and this, this is relevant, I promise, sir, uh, the number one purchase of a songwriter, we're in Music City, for years, has been a Cadillac. They get their big royalty check, they go out and buy a Cadillac. And some, sometimes you'll get one that's really wise, and they'll take it and they'll say, oh, I'm not gonna do that, and I'm gonna stick it back, and I'm gonna invest this money properly and wisely. Those are two ways, but you know what's different about that songwriter that chooses to either blow it all on a Cadillac- Those are two ways. But you know what's different about that songwriter that chooses to either blow it all on a Cadillac or to invest it wisely? It's his money or her money. We are being asked to spend money that is not our money, and I know that that's allocated. But we have to look at it as though we're not going to be recurring because what if it's not? Immediately, our taxpayers are going to get a tax hike, tax raise. That is not warranted, that's not wanted. So as much as I want it to be proper, if we're going to spend it and we're going to do it and give it to the people that do deserve this, the deputies and the folks out on patrol, if it's allocated through the state, we have to look at it responsibly because it's still money that was taken from other people against their will, whether or not it's from the federal, the state or wherever, the county. And so we have to be very, very diligent. So if we are going to try to allocate any kind of funding, it has to be done the most diligent it can be. And this committee seems like the most diligent. I don't think they're going to spread it out because it was mentioned, if you go back and watch the committee video in Budget Committee, that was the reason why Commissioner Schoff made the decision to do one commissioner. Because that way it can be an immediate meeting and there's not some kind of a thing that would hold up on that. There's many reasons for that. So anyway, I just had to say, we got to remember, no matter where the money comes from, it doesn't come from, it doesn't come from it being our money to give. We are commissioners charged with the responsibility of making sure that we are the guard between the deputies and between the citizens to make sure that the deputies and the citizens don't pay extra taxes that are unwarranted. No matter where the money comes from the first year, if it's gone away next year, it's a major, major issue for our citizens who already, our back door is larger than our front door. And so we've got to be very careful to not push out the citizens who are already here by an unwarranted tax hike. I just want to say, I am in support of giving the money in any way we can, as long as it's recurring. It's very important that we do it the right way.
Commissioner Wright.
If someone doesn't show up to work for the highway department, if your backhoe operator doesn't show up, nobody's going to die. You may not build that road at that time for that day. But you let nine officers, nine deputies leave this office. The public's going to be put in danger, folks. Now, if I'm not mistaken, Monday night, we were told that we could wait. The employees of the sheriff's office could wait for their raise. We would have debt rolling off this next year. Well, if that's the case, we have money available right now to give the raises. If it's not available next year, what are we waiting on? You've already told us to wait till next year, so is that money not going to be available next year?
David, can I ask you that? How much debt have we got rolling off next year?
Mr. Long, go ahead.
I believe it's around ten million dollars. I'd have to look.
How much?
About ten million dollars.
Everybody in here knows the passion I have for my job and for all of these people out here, including those who are not employees of the sheriff's office. My passion goes way beyond them. Now, I was told that I could get up here and make a statement that, and this is hard, folks. Unlike the prior commission that's been in here, I was told I could get up here and say certain things and legally I could vote for this. And every one of y'all that I work with out there, y'all know where my heart is. It's with y'all. I may be legally able to vote for this, but morally and ethically, I can't. Unlike other folks who are in here before, I will not be any better than they were. It's not right. I should not be able to vote to give myself a raise. So I will be abstaining from this vote, and it may very well be the vote that puts it over the edge. Y'all look at all these people out here that I worked with. Past four years, that my first term here, I voted against every budget because that commission didn't want to separate the budgets. And there again, it's not right to vote to give yourself a raise. So I will be abstaining from this vote. But make no doubt, if I did not work for the Sumner County Sheriff's Office and I could vote twenty-four times, I'd vote twenty-four times. Thank you, Ellen.
Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to vote for this because if we're now losing nine, if we've lost nine or potentially nine officers in the last month, what will it be, what will it look like next month? Or the month after, or the month after? We cannot afford to not vote for this, so I will be voting for this amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Winn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know the original appropriation was for the five SRO officers in the addition of. And I think it's a great move and I wholeheartedly support it. But I'm just going to ask the question, if we have a problem today with attracting and retaining our current workforce, what does approving five additional positions do for anybody? We have a pay problem, folks. We're not attractive. There are better options available where folks make a lot more money to do the same thing. But we'll approve five jobs that we're going to have problems feeling. We're really setting ourselves up for failure here. We're setting Sunny up for failure. So what I want to do is I want to make an amendment to the amendment, to my amendment. I want to remove the word equally from there. And just, so it'll just be to appropriate the remainder of the Homeland Security and SRO funds to be allocated to the remainder of the sheriff's office employees as specified by the sheriff. So the sheriff makes the budget, the sheriff sets the pay rate, the sheriff should be the one to make these determinations. He can take the advice of the subcommittee if he wants to, but if he doesn't, that's his business. It's his department. So every day we wait, every day that we wait is another opportunity for someone to leave. It's a bigger hole we're going to have to fill. I don't know what else I can say. I really wish and I really hope that you guys can see this and that you'll support it. And these folks need us. We have these funding available that we're going to give to them at some point. I know we've talked about, we've talked about this past budget cycle, just hold on, just hold on. We're asking them again, just hold on. Let the man who was elected to run the department, run the department. Let's give them the tools to fix the problems in his department. Let's let him make decisions on how he best feels that this should be spread and how it should be allocated. Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Winn and second by Commissioner Becker. Now, what are the hands that I see now? I would like for that to be on the amendment to the amendment. And keep in mind, there can be no more amendments until we get rid of this one. Commissioner Becker.
I just got a question. And again, I may just be showing ignorance here, which is fine. So the three point six, it's listed as a statewide school resource officer grant program. But is what we're talking about here, would this money be like, however Sheriff Weatherford saw fit, be allocated to the SROs or to the entire sheriff's department? Because if I'm reading the grant, I mean, at least the title of it, it really specifies specifically SROs. So my question is, is it even allowed, I guess, to use this money?
I think, and Commissioner Schoff may correct me, but because we already meet the qualifications required for the SRO program in Sumner County, the other money can be spent by the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Is that not correct, Commissioner?
Okay. No, no, yeah, all right, thank you. That answers my question.
All right, Commissioner Schoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to correct something real quick about just kind of how budgeting works at the county level, just some like really basic stuff maybe. The, we don't just give pots of money to each, any of the departments to do with and say, hey, here's X amount and y'all just, you know, do with it. That's just not how the budgeting process works at all writ large. And I know, you know, maybe there's just some confusion just about that little basic thing there. But it doesn't mean that the individuals, departments would, you know, don't deserve their autonomy once we do that. But part of the budgeting process is actually line by line down to the, down to the individual level. And so that's kind of how this does. And what we're, what we're asking for is to basically apply that exact same basic principle that we always apply to this process right here. So just, you know, just a real simple thing.
All right. Now, this is the amendment to the amendment, seeing no other hands. All right, Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Hyde, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment.
You can.
Sorry, two amendments. I'd like to sit down, Mr. Hyde.
That would be a very good idea. All right. See, I asked if that'd be placed on, Commissioner Schmidt.
So ultimately, what your, what my fellow commissioner across the aisle is saying, it is the sheriff's money. I don't want to put it his money, but his money to really disperse as he chooses. So can he, can he set pay rates for guys that have been there twenty years versus, and say, well, this class is going to get more money than, you know, our newcomers? I don't know. The answer to that. Well, no, but what the point I'm making though is if ultimately we could have the subcommittee come up with suggestions of this rate, this rate and this rate, and the sheriff could tell them, pound salt, I'm going to do what I want, you know, to make, you know, my guys happy. So, I mean, ultimately, you know, it's their money. It's not our money. I've heard my fellow commissioner down here, and I'm not putting him on the spot, but he hasn't objected to any of it. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that to pick on him, but I feel like that, you know, if you felt different, you would say, hey, look, these guys should get this, these guys should get that. I'm supporting the sheriff's one or the other. Yeah, I'm going to leave here tonight. Like I've said in the past, you know, some people are going to hate me and that's fine. I'm not here to be liked. But I'm here to back the sheriff's department. And ultimately, if this, tonight is what we got to come to, then I just want them to be, you know, mindful that, you know, when we come back to our fiscal year budget next year, we don't know how any of that's going to look. We can say there's ten million coming off the books, but we could have another problem come up between now and then. So I just hope, is my hope, that if it is passed, that they don't come back in May and say, we're not happy with what was passed here tonight.
All right, we have the amendment to the amendment on the board. Are you wanting to speak to the amendment on the amendment? Oh, Mary, okay, go ahead.
I appreciate what everybody's saying. I've talked, I emailed a few people that emailed me from the sheriff's department. And I listened and I talked, I talked to people on the phone. And some of the things that I heard was, you know, I'm getting a master's degree and I'm not getting any more pay than the guy that comes in here. Or there's a disparity in the pay scale for some reason. In, like, if I go to school and I'm, he and I are working together and I get my master's degree in law enforcement, X, Y, Z, and he's just, you know, he's doing his thing, I'm not getting paid any more money for what I've done to encourage myself to go to school. What I'm asking is, and I, I feel like with a blanket pay raise for every single person, which I'm not opposed to it, I'm not. I'm not opposed to the folks getting their pay raise. What I have a concern about is that the folks that are in these different scales of pay, or, you know, they're in different levels of their work. This isn't going to fix the issue because the issue is you have a shortage in law enforcement. Is it the pay rate? Is it just people don't want to go to work? People don't want to be a policeman? Is it the demographics, you know? What are all these things? And I, I have this, I just feel like there's, trying to get this out. There is like a, it doesn't make sense to me because I feel like, you know, they're saying, oh, we're going to leave. Nine, nine people are leaving. In three weeks, we're leaving. Well, okay, you know, I've been in, I've worked on my life and we have the same thing in healthcare. We were held hostage. And what happened was when COVID came in, people didn't want to work. They didn't want to do the work. So what happened is these, as needed companies came in and brought in these employees who are making three to four times more money than the people that actually took the time to come to work. So you were, these, some nurses are getting a hundred dollars an hour and didn't, the people that are at the sheriff's department are very dedicated. The guys that we have in Sumner County love what they do and they're very dedicated. But I don't, I don't want any of them to feel like they're being held hostage or we're going to be held hostage, that we have to bring people in to augment that. And then what happens? You break the system. So I'm trying to figure out, what's the sheriff going to do about the issues? Because I asked that in Health and Emergency Services, what is the sheriff, does he know about this? Because we're getting all these emails and these people are dissatisfied and they want to leave. And does he know about it? I'm sure he knows about it, I'm sure. I'm sorry, I'm watching a video here in front of me. So I just feel like, you know, there is, this, this doesn't seem like it's going to correct anything. It feels like it's, we're going to give them the raise and I'm happy they're going to get it and it's going to be great and it'll do good. Because I told them I was for it. But I don't think it's going to, it's going to correct the problem that's in the system that is causing this. Because you can throw money at something all day long, but if you don't correct the backside of it, then it won't matter. Just saying.
All right, this. Commissioner Teichner.
Will this money, if this amendment passes, will it even raise the amount of money that the sheriff's department makes, the employees make to equal Robertson County? Will it even do that?
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I think.
It is the amendment on the amendment, one of the board.
I think it is the amendment on the amendment because what he's saying, what the amendment was, was to give it to the sheriff and let him decide what he wants to do with it. And he's wanting to know if that is going to be enough. And to answer your question, no one would. one would know, I don't think. I don't know the number of employees. That's why a committee was put together.
Yeah. The only way they would know then, you're saying, is, is the way that we, that they planned in budget to go through the committee process in one month and find out those answers through our finance director and the Sheriff's Department and our commissioner?
In my humble opinion, yes.
And so that would actually tell us if that's enough money to keep from losing our, our very valuable deputies, correct?
I would hope so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We have that on the board. You will either vote yes or no for this amendment.
Each commissioner, record your votes.
With 13 to eight votes, that amendment fails. And we're back on the other amendment? I think that was Commissioner Ring's. Okay. All right. Is this on the amendment and not the main motion? Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. I would like to send this on, I mean, keep this with that committee that's, that's going to do this study on this and come forth with these answers. Because I've got a lot of questions about how that math will work out as well. But I just also wanted to correct the record for some things that were stated here tonight that were incorrect, that nine deputies were leaving. That was never stated, but it was restated as that by the commissioners up here. We know that nine people have applied at other positions. That doesn't mean that they're leaving. We don't know how many positions are available to those people that are, they could all be trying to get the same position, for all I know. I'm tired of the sky's falling approach to these requests. And I think if I could turn that way and speak to them, I would say that they are hearing an overall consensus that they're getting a raise. And I would, I would hope that they would just stick it out a little bit longer to see how this goes. Because I don't want to lose any of them. So I will be supporting them getting a raise. I just think this needs to go through the process that we laid out already.
All right. Seeing no other hands, we will vote on the first amendment. Do you want to clarify that amendment so that we don't have any doubts about it?
This amendment to appropriate the remainder of the Homeland Security SRO funds to be allocated to the remainder of the Sheriff's Office employees equally as specified by the sheriff.
All right. That's the first amendment. And then we'll be back on the main motion that's on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
That vote fails 13 to eight. Now, we're back to the original motion where we will consider the raises through a committee that's been appointed. Well, we'll do the raises through a committee that has been appointed to establish how that will be done and immediately hire the SRO positions. Any questions on that? Commissioner Becker.
I would like to make an amendment here. So we're talking about the hiring these five. I would like to add a clause here that states that, I don't know what the wording is, but basically, I want to put it in here that if the state withdraws the funding, that we withdraw these five positions. So it would be surrounding the idea of, that it'd be tied to the state funding. I know everyone thinks it's going to be recurring, but if it's not, can't do that? So it's part, part of the maintenance of every?
Wait, let's not carry on the discussion.
I withdraw, I withdraw.
All right. Commissioner Ring.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I've been dealing with the SRO issue for 30 years. As a member of the Gallatin City Council in the 1990s, we had a proposal brought by the police, the chief of police, to hire an SRO for Gallatin High School. It was a 100% fund the first year, 75 the second, 25% funding from the federal government for the third year. The fourth year, if we kept that position, it would be fully funded by the city of Gallatin. There was some opposition to it because they didn't, weren't sure if that's what we wanted to do. As an educator, I was very supportive of it. We got that through. And Gallatin High School had its SRO in about 1993. And we've had, and they've had one ever since, as so have the, and the other schools have done also. I do want to correct something that's been said previously. It's been said several times over the last few years. When the county commission voted to put an SRO in every school, there was no way that could happen immediately. The number of SRO training spots are allocated by the numbers of SRO trainings available. We can't, if we have 10 new SROs, there's no place for us to get those 10 SROs trained this year. Okay? We might get two or three trained. We can't get 10 trained. Five is a possibility. But you can't train, if everybody's getting SROs like they are now, there's just not enough training spots available to fill up every spot. So again, as I've said, for the last 30 years, I've, I've been supportive of the SRO program. And I will continue to do so and vote for this resolution.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, we will post this for a vote at this time.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
SRO officers, additional SRO officers will be hired and a committee will start working on how to distribute the money. All right. Mr. Chairman. On the back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2309-27 authorized transfer of $56,480 from major categories for various items approved by the Health Department. I so move.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.